I would like to call the April 8, 2024 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I am Mayor Pro Tem Daniels and I will presiding over the meeting tonight. I would like to provide the invocation. Mr. McGurk for us tonight, if you'll provide the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Let us pray. Eternal God, this is a day that the Lord has made. We rejoice in our glan in it. We ask for your blessings on the entire city, the mayor and the council members, the city staff, the members of the public who are present and the entire community, particularly those who are most vulnerable, and we ask for the safety of our residents. And we ask for your blessings tonight as we conduct the public's business. And we ask for a spirit of civility and respect. For Christ's sake and in his name, I pray. Amen.
A stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hallelujah. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mayor Connolly will not be joining us this evening. Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Daniels.
I'm sorry, Daniels. Daniels, sorry.
Present.
Counselmember Foreman.
Present.
Counselmember Blackburn.
Present.
Counselmember Scully.
Present.
Counselmember Robinson.
Here.
Counselmember Willis.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, you've got the forum.
Thank you. We will now move to the approval of the agenda. Mr. Manager, are there any recommended changes?
I have no changes, but I'll turn it over to Attorney Anne McGurk.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor Pro Tem and Council, I would ask that a closed session be added to the agenda and it will be read at the end of the meeting.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Blackburn, seconded by Councilmember Robinson.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
All right, motion passes six zero.
Okay. Onto our public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be subject of public hearings conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of thirty minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with the clerk to speak in order registered until the allocated thirty minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have the opportunity to speak until the allocated thirty minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Yes, ma'am. First speaker is Ms. Lisa Tyson. Ms. Tyson, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Councilmembers. My name is Lisa Tyson and I'm the vice chair of the North of the River Association, also known as NOTRA. Our mission is to fight continued environmental injustice, injustice in our neighborhoods to prevent any harmful facility, particularly crypto mining, from operating in our area and to be a unified voice for the communities north of the Tar River. I'm speaking tonight because we're tired and frustrated with this crypto issue. We have been fighting against crypto mining for two and a half years and now that Compute North has left our city, why not reverse this zoning back to its original state? In January 2022, council refused to hear our concerns and changed the public hearing to virtual to further attempt to stifle our voices and voted against the people's plea to say no to crypto. This January, the city planner claimed that the city code could not be changed with seat and power to the board of adjustment. Last month, the city attorney threatened that the city couldn't be sued if the city code is changed and now the planning department is saying that modular data processing can be removed from the city code and part of the data processing ordinance can be changed. Now you all are saying that the city won't get sued for implementing these recommendations, but can get sued for repealing their ordinances and banning crypto entirely. This is somewhat confusing. At least nine counties and at least three municipalities in North Carolina have taken action to ban or strictly limit crypto facilities, but Greenville can't. Either there needs to be further investigation on these codes or there is a crypto mining facility waiting to sue the city, even though the mayor clearly stated that there are no pending applications from a crypto company. Of course, you all are aware that tonight's agenda has a resolution authorizing an application for federal funds for low or no emission public transportation, a resolution authorizing submission of a grant for environmental protection and Environmental and Climate Justice Committee Change Grant. And then a discussion about crypto, which is literally the most wasteful use of energy in the world. This all seems very ironic. Can I finish? It's not long. It's totally unfair that we, I'm just going to continue reading. It's totally unfair that we have to spend valuable time attending meetings to discuss an issue which the people do not want in the city and ordinance which should be banned or reverted back to its original state. We are tired and frustrated from having to do the research that paid city employees should have done more than two years ago. We're tired of having to beg you all to stand up for the character of our town, to do the right thing for the community, to do what the voters in the city of Greenville made clear in November, which is to say no to crypto, ban crypto, and focus on more positive growth in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tyson.
Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker is Ms. Karen Zip. Ms. Zip, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening. My name is Karen Zip. I am a professor of history at East Carolina University and I'm also a member of the Greenville Environment Advisory Commission. I speak to you tonight about crypto mining and the ordinance that's at hand as a resident of Greenville. Unless you are a crypto mining company, cryptocurrency mining is bad. It's bad for the environment, especially carbon emissions and noise pollution. It's bad for local electricity rates and it's bad because it is used to mask illegal activities such as sex trafficking. You can find more about that in the op ed that I have distributed to you that was published in January of 2022. Even China has banned crypto mining. Now cryptocurrency mining companies are looking for other third world locations with cheap power, cheap land, and distracted or disenfranchised residents in communities who will open their doors. For some inexplicable reason, cryptocurrency values are on the ascent and so is the greater risk of a mine operating in your backyard, my backyard, our backyards. There is no meritorious benefit to the community from hosting a crypto mine. I would wager that almost no one in Greenville trades or pays for goods in cryptocurrency except maybe for the illicit purposes such as those outlined in my op ed. Ask anyone on the street, does anyone, anyone in Greenville benefit, I mean really benefit from cryptocurrency mining? There is no economic benefit to the community either. Company executives have no plans to relocate to these areas where they build these mining operations. They don't care about the neighbors, the quality of the schools, or even the city council. They merely desire to colonize the electricity produced in that community by building huge modular data centers that are incompatible with human habitation. The data processing centers are managed by only a handful of workers who, like the neighbors, must endure the loud and interminably constant thrumming and buzzing akin to a low roar of the electrical components from the thousands of computer processors in continuous operation. For these reasons, I support a full ban of crypto mining operations in Greenville. Any concessions at all should come in the form of a revised ordinance on the order of the example set by Henderson County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zip.
Thank you.
Our next speaker.
Okay. Next speaker is Ms. Manarva Freeman. Ms. Freeman, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
So I have a letter and I had addressed it to the mayor, but it's absent. I'll still read the letter and it says, "I represent a nonprofit organization known as Pitt County Family Development Corporation. Our mission is to empower, educate, and advocate for families. At our core, we want a safe, healthy, and thriving community. Consequently, we got involved in the campaign to say no to crypto and we have been fighting the whole time. We are steadfast in our position because we believe in family sustainability. Crypto mining will not bring the jobs that families need. Our utility bill could go up because crypto potentially could use so much of the grid. I propose that this body, you all, continue to consider the community needs. That's why we elected you. Our voices have been consistent. We have done our research. We have reached out to other communities who have had experience with this industry. Crypto mining, the feedback has not been favorable. We have partnered with other organizations on these environmental issues. My question is, if crypto mining is so great, why have they not pulled out of Greenville and gone somewhere else, but they're still here after two and a half years? I encourage you to hear our voices as our elected representatives and look for other industries that will complement our community." And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Thank you, Ms. Freeman.
Next speaker is Mr. Bobby Weatherly. Mr. Weatherly, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I want to speak to two injustices associated with crypto mining. One has to do with power demand and the second one is about economic development for our community. I speak from my own research as well as some thirteen years' experience with a large electric, a public electric facility company. I did customer service work in consulting with customers of all sizes about how to efficiently use the power that they were demanding and how to reduce those costs. My economic development job was about recruiting industry into the area that that utility served and helping develop attractive communities for locating those industries. Particularly interested, of course, in recruiting industry that created large numbers of employees and paid them a living wage. To the specific issue tonight, I'll share my research information with the clerk. But to speak to the injustice associated with a crypto mine located in our community, the pricing of power that we buy from Duke is priced based on the amount, they're called kilowatt hours, and also the peak demand in any particular time during the month. The effect of peak demand is to raise the cost per unit purchased by a customer. So, but that unit cost is spread over every customer based on their usage. So the effect is that our residential customers, by the way, there are about, there are a little over forty thousand single-family homes in Pitt County. Maybe that's Greenville. The crypto mine does not carry the burden of cost associated with their demand. They just pay the same increased rate for the kilowatt hours that they use. And this...
That's time.
Okay.
You can finish, Bobby.
Didn't get to two.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherly.
Next speaker. Should I finish?
Be fine with it. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Mr. Weatherly, you're welcome to finish if you'd like.
I'll be quick. I think it's clear what happens to residential customers. Now, think for a minute about the disabled veteran on the $700 a month income from social security. The impact of a $15 a month raise in utility cost is very significant. It's not very significant for me in the middle class and it's obviously not very significant for those in the higher income brackets. To the economic and environmental impact on the community, think of a luxury boat builder that requires lots of labor or an automobile company building wire harnesses requiring less than one percent of the power, of the demand of power of a crypto mine. And the crypto mine I have in reference is the one that was proposed here two and a half years ago, which is 150 megawatts. So these industries require a minuscule amount of man related to the job benefit that they bring to the community. And the other, the second part of that is that in recruiting businesses and industries to our, to our neighborhoods into Greenville and Pitt County, those industries, based on my experience and what I've heard, what the research shows, they're looking for a really healthy environment for their employees. They want their employees to be satisfied with where they are and things like noise pollution, environmental pollution, like for a crypto mine, is all this waste material that they develop and have to put into our waste disposal system. Again, this is a lot of studies and I won't go into detail about it, but over and over, professionals have shown the very clear effect, larger effect on the marginalized people of environmental pollution over and over again. Thank you for letting me have some more time.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherly.
Okay. Next speaker is Mr. Hat Maxwell. Mr. Maxwell, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening.
I wanted to speak to you this night, tonight about, as a long-term Greenville resident and also a former three-term member of the Greenville City Planning and Zoning Commission. The issue of data processing facilities came before us on December 21, 2021. It was a Zoom meeting because we were still in the middle of COVID protocols. That night, city staff presented a brief description accompanied by photos of what constitutes modular data processing facilities versus the data processing facility itself, the building. It was explained that these, that the text amendment would put limitations on how tall a facility could be, the distance that facility had to be from the boundaries of the property, the types and amounts of vegetation that should be planted along the edge of the property to provide a proper buffer from adjoining properties, and it would impose limitations on the noise levels when measured by, at the edge of the property. Sitting and listening to the description of the various measures we were told would be implemented to regulate such a facility at the time seemed very reasonable. A representative from Greenville ENC Alliance told us that they had recruited Compute North to locate in Greenville. They stated that this company would make a $55 million investment in our community and that the company would create fifteen full-time, high-paying jobs with an average salary of $56,000 a year. This was the rosy picture that was painted for us. Surely Greenville would benefit from such a company as Compute North if they located here. Another of the experts, as described by the staff to us, was asked what he had wanted to add to this discussion. His response was that he hadn't prepared any comments, but he'd be glad to answer any of our questions. The problem was none of us knew enough to ask intelligent questions. Also, there was no one there to speak in opposition to this request, this requested changes in the code for the city. Maybe that was because the meeting took place four days before Christmas. I'm not sure that many people in our community knew this issue was coming before planning and zoning or had done the research on the possible negative impacts of such a facility as Compute North. The excessive amount of electricity these facilities consume and the nonstop noise they make 24/7 were never mentioned during the meeting. The bottom line for me, as I looked at the video of our December 21, 2021 meeting a couple of days ago, is that we were woefully uninformed and ill-informed about the Pandora's box of adverse possibilities our vote would be opening up for our city. I therefore believe that the changes in these codes should be revisited to better protect our community.
And that's time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell.
Next speaker is Ms. Cindy Elmore. Ms. Elmore, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening, everybody. Last fall, I had a conversation with someone involved in the effort to bring Compute North to Greenville who said, "If we didn't do it, somebody else would." I'm not so sure about that and here's why. Energy experts are now warning that the U.S. is facing a future power shortage amid the explosive demand by data centers and new factories. According to the International Energy Agency, data centers already consumed more than four percent of the country's total electricity in 2022. By 2026, they'll consume six percent. At the same time, there are federal incentives for new manufacturers of clean tech products such as solar panels and electric car batteries, which North Carolina has been pretty successful at luring in. But power sector consulting firms are now warning that some regions may miss out on economic development opportunities because the grids might not keep up. Georgia just learned this the hard way when the state's largest power company issued a projection for electricity use for the next decade that is now seventeen times what it was only recently. So now Georgia is rethinking its previous efforts to bring in data centers. They're afraid that they'll lose out on better potential uses of power that could drive innovation and economic growth. Energy analysts in Texas are saying the same thing about the crypto drain on their grid there. So those who tell us this won't happen may not know why. Because cryptocurrency mining operations have never had to disclose their energy consumption. Right now, however, the U.S. Department of Energy is in the process of compelling that data for the first time ever. Those in the crypto mining business really don't want to provide this information, which is interesting. But we'll know by the end of this year exactly what the drain is to this country's energy grid. So both of those reasons, the looming electricity shortage and the currently hidden cost of this industry, is partially why they're in such a rush to nail down energy sources now. Those who say, "Of course, there'll be enough power," well, how can they know until this report comes out? Who will pay for the new power supplies needed? There's a reason why China got rid of crypto mining and there's a reason why these companies are not going to communities served directly by Duke Power and the big utilities. Here's my last point. For more than a decade, Greenville and the GUC have promoted local improvements in sustainability. Yet all the solar farms, all the LED streetlights, all the hybrid and electric city vehicles, what will they have been for if we allow crypto mining, which will undo all of it and more? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elmore.
Next speaker is Mr. Walter Fields. Mr. Fields, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Daniels and city council members.
Good evening.
Here we go again. Crypto currency mining. We stood here two years ago and talked about it, but we know that crypto currency mining seemed to locate in areas where there's cheap electricity, but the cheapest electricity is not necessarily associated... But the cheapest electricity is not necessarily associated with the lowest environmental, detrimental, and the health damage that it does. And it is hard to regulate, entice crypto-cursing mining, and hold them accountable for the damage that they do. Researchers say that Ethereum, Litecoin, Monero, Bitcoins, mining alone, used more electricity in the year of twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen. The four of them were responsible for between three to fifteen million tons of carbon dioxide emission. We say no to crypto. It reminds me of the parable that Jesus gave, and he says, "It's like a man that built a house, and he dug deep, and he laid the foundation on a rock. And the wind and the storms blew against that house, but it did not shake that house because it was laid on a solid foundation." Crypto is a house of corn. I mean, it's a house of, of, is a house that will fall. It is not stationary. It's a house of cars. Greenville has a, a, a stable foundation, and why shall we dash foot of those that have prepared the way for us so that we can have a mutual and future living? We say no to crypto. It also remind me of what the, in the Old Testament, it talks about, we being a man is steward over his creation, not to take advantage of his creation, but to take care of his creation and take care of his environment. How can we allow something like crypto mining to come in to destroy his creation in our town, in our village? What it would do, what would crypto mining do to the residents of Greenville and North Carolina? What will it do? It would destroy the sounds of the birds, and the wind, and the children laughing and playing on our playground.
That's time.
So I urge you, what decision that you make today, that you would say no to crypto. You join in with all, everybody of the Pitt County, all we want you to do is to say no to crypto. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Ann Maxwell. You have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Do you want to support our city's long-range plan, Horizons Twenty-Twenty-Six? In the plan's introduction, it states, "The comprehensive plan represents an opportunity to envision and achieve a vibrant and sustainable future." Does crypto mining fit into a sustainable future? Compute North would have used one hundred and fifty megawatts of electricity compared to five megawatts for the typical industrial customer, thirty times more electricity than a typical industrial customer, yet very few jobs. The electricity would have been produced primarily from fossil fuels. Is that reducing our carbon production? Is that contributing to a sustainable future for Greenville? Horizons Twenty-Twenty-Six includes a vision framework with eight parts. Only one part of that vision framework was used in, as justification for the change to the text, or for the new text amendment, and that part was growing the economic hub. But it left out the other seven parts, which included maintaining fiscal responsibility, fostering a resilient city, growing a healthy city, and growing together. We are not growing a healthy city if we allow some of our citizens to be exposed to the constant noise of a crypto mining operation. The carbon emissions from burning fossil fuels, which impact all of us, is certainly not a healthy city. And it's also not a fiscally responsible decision. In Murphy, North Carolina, when they had a severe cold period, their electrical grid could not handle it, and so citizens on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day had their power cut for fifteen to forty, from fifteen to forty-five minutes, no, fifteen to forty-five seconds out of every hour, minutes out of every hour. I'm saying the wrong thing. But anyway, and as theirs, as their electricity was being cut off and their pipes were freezing, they could hear the hum of the crypto operation in the background because it never shut down. So is that fiscally responsible? We are not growing together when all citizens are not being treated fairly. Allowing crypto mining is certainly not growing a great place. The Horizons Plan also has, one of its action items is to develop a green energy plan. That green energy plan has not been written, and it certainly would not include a crypto mining operation.
And that's time.
I'd like to end by saying, Jane Goodall said, "What you do makes a difference, and you have to decide what kind of difference you want to make." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell.
Mayor, Mayor Protem and council, I just want to let you know that the public comment time period is over. We are at our thirty minutes, but you do have one last speaker here.
Do we need to vote so that last speaker can be heard, or?
Or I would say if, if there's, even people after the last speaker, just kind of like what we did with the, when we had the comments about tennis and pickleball, just to let everybody speak who wants to speak. Is, is everybody comfortable with that?
Well, I, I want to work on the ones who signed up to speak, and then we'll see where we go from there.
Okay.
So it, does that require a vote?
Uh, yes, I would say that you'd vote to.
So I move to allow the final speaker to speak.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go to opposed.
Motion passes six-zero. Okay. Last speaker is Ms. Susan Redding. Ms. Redding, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Thank you for this opportunity to all of you to speak tonight. I'm speaking as a retired healthcare professional, worked all of my time here in Greenville. Others have spoken tonight about a lot of the negative effects of crypto mining on communities, the massive amounts of electricity, much of it sourced from fossil fuels. Required to run these data processing centers, including the energy that's needed to cool the computers that run twenty-four-seven, brings it with, brings with it negative effects on our environment, often in targeted communities. Crypto-mining facilities have also brought economic disaster to many areas and have led to significant increases, as others have pointed out, in the cost of electricity for consumers in the affected areas. This evening, though, I'd like to briefly address the negative health effects of crypto mining, caused particularly by the air and noise pollution that these data processing centers generate. It's well documented in many well-researched studies in the United States, in Europe, and in Asia, that increases in air pollution consequent to the burning of fossil fuels increase the incidence of asthma in adults and children, and the incidence of cardiovascular disease, pulmonary disease, dementia, and many other chronic diseases. Mustafa Santiago Ali, formerly, formerly of the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency's Office of Environmental Justice at the annual Clean Air North Carolina Conference, held just in April of twenty-twenty-three, reminded us, and this was really interesting for me to find out, that more people are dying from air pollution than gun violence, more than car crashes, and more than overdoses. Toxic air pollutants have been even found in the brains and lungs of unborn infants. Studies of the negative impact of noise pollution on our health are not as plentiful in the United States, mainly because the government hasn't funded studies since about nineteen-eighty. But there are many studies that have been done in Europe that point to the negative effects, obviously, on our ability to hear well, but also these same studies suggest that noise pollution may lead to increased incidences, again, of cardiovascular disease, pulmonary disease, and other chronic diseases, and these are due to the effect of the noise pollution on the inflammatory system in our bodies. For all these reasons that are noted tonight, I hope that the council will follow the lead of so many other cities who have rejected the establishment of crypto mining and reject that for Greenville and Pitt County. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Redding.
Permission to give you a copy of?
You can give them to our deputy city manager.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did anyone else, is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak? If so, speak. Please state your name.
Yes.
You have three minutes.
All right. My name is Mark Parker. I'm a member of CARE. We've heard a lot of details and a lot of oppositions tonight, and about the health aspects of it, but I'm just going to put the cherry on, on the top of the sundae. Let's talk about the money. Compute North and GUC, it was, let's talk about the symbiotic relationship of it. They're going to use more power. GUC was going to make more money. Estimated, what, thirty-four million annually? And I went on the GUC, uh, GUC site today, and it said that it is owned by the citizens of Greenville. It is ran by a board, but if we're the owners, we should have some say on what happens in our city. Nobody consulted us. They spoke to other people. I would say that maybe they were special, maybe they had a certain interest, but nobody really reached out to the people. And that has to stop in our city. And Compute North wasn't even a viable choice, even though it was a bad choice, because they went bankrupt. And even when they went bankrupt, you know, even in their listings, it said, it listed individuals who actually, that the Compute North owed money to, not the people, but special interests. So that is an issue. We have that same issue in Washington, D.C., but why do we have it in Greenville? People are supposed, these boards and admissions are supposed to serve us, but we don't see them. You see the people, the owners of the GUC, we're all upset. We don't want this. And by the zoning ordinance, it left the door open, just a crack, for someone else to slide in. Didn't say crypto mining, it said data processing centers. You could use that term loosely with a lot of different things. Yes, there's a lot of environmental issues, but let's follow the money. All money is not good money. It doesn't benefit us. The thirty-four million, uh, which was projected by the GUC that they were going to earn, how is that going to benefit the people of Greenville? Did any, did the board for the GUC say anything, how it's going to benefit us? No. It was just going to be more money for the GUC. But what about the people of Greenville? And it's time out for the people to be left, stop being left behind. We vote, we have a voice, and we want those voices to be heard, not ignored. So for, I am totally against any type of crypto, anything coming into Greenville, because it does not do anything but generate revenue for GUC or any other people that are involved with it. We don't want it, and so let's not have it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. State your name, you have three minutes.
Mayor Protem and council, I just advise the council to adopt a motion to continue to extend the comment.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, one and all. It's great to be here, and I appreciate your service to this great town that we live in. My name is Ann Harrington. I live a few blocks from here.
Six-oh.
And have been a Greenville resident for many, many years. I am opposed to crypto for all the reasons that my esteemed colleagues have already stated. It bothers me that it's not a regulated industry. If you saw my letter to the editor that was published recently, you'll see that I brought that issue forth. They're trying to get some regulations, but, you know, it's not yet. So let's put this aside, let's put this, not a choice, in our city right now. I, yes, it's Earth Day coming up here, right? So y'all have a, an opportunity to, you know, support what most of us want, clean community full of good things. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
Praise the Lord, everybody. I am Billian Kenyon, and I do live north of the river. And this morning, as I was reading my dear friend, I don't know how many I read these, but I read it every morning. And today, it reads, "Joy in the City." I'm not going to read everything, but I'm going to read something that I thought was very important. And it says, "Joy is always a wonderful gift." Proverbs, though, describes how a city, a people, can experience joy that goes even deeper and lasts for longer. When the righteousness prospers, Proverbs says, "The city rejoices." When those who truly love God, for those, I'm going to read it exactly as it is, "When those who truly live by God's design for humanity begin to influence a community." Then this seems a good news because it means God's justice is taken home. Greed diminishes, the poor find support, the oppressed are protected. Whenever God's right way of living flourish, then there's joy and blessing in the city. If we are living our, as God waves, then the results would be good news for everyone. The way we live make the community around us better and more whole. God invites us to be part of His work, to heal the world. He invites us to bring joy to the city, and this is what we want, joy in the city of Greenville for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Kenyon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Aiden Spakowski. I am a student at ECU. I am the secretary of YDSA and the acting president of SAGA at ECU. I'm also a computer scientist, and I have studied the blockchain and cryptocurrencies for a while. Now, now, cryptocurrency has failed. It is failing currently and has failed over and over repeatedly since its inception in the mid-two thousand teens. It is booming and busting. Now, you might think that this is just a regular facet of the economy, but this happens rapidly, over and over, and why does Greenville deserve to be the front of a bubble false economy that only sex traffickers and drug dealers use? A twenty-one billion bubble economy that is sure to dry up in three months, quoted from New York Times. Now, why do citizens of Greenville, like me and plenty of others behind me, deserve to argue over and against a twenty-four-hour jet engine in their backyard, energy costs that do nothing but drain and depreciate the value of the community, and new technology that does not serve to progress Greenville any further or add any value to its citizens or its community? Not every new technology is progress, and this technology is just a gimmick, a gimmick that will surely fail, a business that has run bankrupt, and a well that has run dry. Put people over profits and let Greenville stay the progressive capital of eastern North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming here tonight. I'll make this quick, because you've got things to do. My name is Jalen Lampa. I am a member of the North of I am a member of the North of the River Association and YDSA on ECU campus, and I'm a political science major. And like many of the people here, I've come in regards to the crypto mining facility that we've been dealing with. It's been three years, three years since this whole thing started, three years since the community united to protect their interests. Three years, and the ordinance that would allow Compute North and facilities like it remains. It is an open wound in the armor we have to protect our citizens, one that must be addressed. As many of my colleagues have said, crypto mining has no place in this city. It facilitates the funding of some of the most heinous crimes imaginable. It brings environmental harm to our ecosystem, one which we have a responsibility to protect, and it brings medical harm to our citizens, especially in communities that historically have been pushed to the margins of our society. And perhaps most outrageous of all, it drains the resources of our city. It takes the lifeblood of what we need to fund our communities and gives almost nothing in return. Put simply, it is an example of the special interests taking what they want at the expense of the people. And the voice of the people, like in the cacophony that is our US Congress, has been snuffed out, or at the very least, has been muffled. But unlike the halls of Washington DC, I like to think that we here in Greenville have a bit of a clearer voice. It is without question that crypto and industries like it have no place here and should never have been allowed to set foot. It is an affront to the working class of this city and should never have been allowed to happen. And yet, and yet, I am grateful that this happened. You want to know why? I'm grateful because it brought the people of this city together. It gave us something to unite against, and it gave us a wider awareness of who we are. And on a personal level, it gave me a purpose. It gave me a second family, one I am forever grateful to have. And I could not be more proud of the work that we have done. And so, I ask this council to repeal this ordinance, and also, moving forward, that should a decision like this be made, it be made not for those special interests, but it be made for the people, so that we might have something we can unite for rather than against. Before I present my time, I'd like to ask everyone who's been involved in this to stand up so we can see you. You've all done a fine job. And I think all of us here-- Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Council members, residents of Greenville. My name is Alfred Adams, and I just want to speak to you briefly about the crypto mining operations. I've been a resident of the Greenville area for about 42 years now, and I love Greenville. I love Pitt County. And I, I live out by the industrial park, so I'm very close. So crypto mining would affect my quality of life directly, so that's, that's my main concern, because I've, I've known, I've seen where other communities have had it, and the noise is atrocious. And I like the idea of being able to sleep in my sunroom with the windows open and hear the sounds of crickets and frogs and hoots of owls or whatever, you know, just the serenity of a quiet night. Crypto mining would alleviate that. So I'm, I'm speaking as somebody that would be directly affected, and I've talked to a lot of my neighbors, and they feel the same way. So I just wanted to speak from my heart and let you know that a lot of us that are directly affected are concerned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Thank you, Ms. Kenyon.
Council members, all of you. My name is Carla Hart. I am a resident of the city of Greenville. I sent you all an email message earlier today, and I won't read that. You're very intelligent people, you can read it for yourself. I do apologize, because I think I repeatedly misspelled styrofoam. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
During the time, and frankly, I'm so encouraged by the people who spoke here tonight, and I'd like to just say that I was one of those people in the state and house fire department packed audience when Compute North was trying to sell us on the idea of the mining operations that they proposed in the, near the Belvoir Elementary School. I think they approached the county before they approached the city. And it was amazing to me to see the development of community that was formed by those individuals. And so, in that spirit, I wrote to you with some concerns, but I also want to stress to you that hours, hundreds of hours of research and time have gone into all of the issues that have been addressed here tonight. And that's a pretty unique set of circumstances. I also want to thank you for all of your efforts to create a greenway, to create green spaces, and to be environmentally conscious of the direction that Greenville takes. None of the individuals who spoke this evening, nor do I have any financial investment in whether a mining operation comes into the city or the county. We speak from our hearts about our concerns for the future of Greenville, and I hope that you will take that into consideration as you deliberate and discuss and talk about what the future of Greenville is going to look like. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hart. Thank you, Ms. Hart.
My name is Carlos White. A few years ago, well, it just might, it was three years ago, I came down here in a totally unrelated session, and I seen a bunch of elders outside passing out, they had little things that you put on your, saying, "No crypto." And I'm like, I don't even know what that is, but I sat there and I listened to them. And I was like, man, that's, they out here for this cause. It had to be something important, because they're elders. And like, you know, you got to understand, like, she, she just walked up here. So today, when I came in, so I'm totally unrelated, I'm listening to it, I'm seeing some familiar faces, and it's like, man, these people's quality of life has to be affected by this thing, because they're coming out in droves, and it's a diverse crew. If you look at them, it's a diverse crew, it's old and it's young. And you guys are in a quagmire, because, you know, you want the city to progress, right? But at the same time, I'm looking like, man, this audience here is coming to let you know that we don't want it, they don't want it. I knew nothing about crypto until I just Googled it, you know? Honestly, that's just me, right? Even when they gave me the pen, you know, because I've got something else going on, I'm like, ah. So I Googled it just then, I'm like, man, they don't want this. So we want Greenville to grow, but we got our elders saying, hey, we don't want it, and their quality of life. He just says, quality of life's going to be affected. I don't know this guy whatsoever, but I'm sure he had a nice life growing, and he got his house, and he wants to be able to sit back and enjoy himself. And that's just not going to happen if you got this machine that's boom, boom, boom all night. I mean, it might not sound like nothing now, but over a period of time, not to mention the evidence that they just sat up here and read off of you guys about these people going bankrupt, you know? So it can't be that much of a big deal, you know? So I just think that you got, the council just need to just really take these people and really listen to what they got to say. I don't know about how that ordinance will be repealed or anything, but if it can be repealed, just so they don't have to come back, we're in about five, six months from now, you guys got to vote on it again, so now they got to get in their cars, come from over the river, and do this all over again, which I don't think is fair, because they are elders. And that's just all I needed to say about that. Just respect what they got to say, even the younger, younger crew, just respect what they got to say, and just listen to them. When you guys make your decisions, just really soul-search, and be like, hey, do I want to be on this other end, when you guys are not, you know, doing this forever, and you have to come and vote? Like, they had, I think the last time I was here, Mr. Carter was here, I think, and he used to be over here. So it's like, this guy's actually telling you guys, we don't want it. And, you know, he was in your same position, so, you know, you just got to look, just listen to the people. That's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks for giving us this time. My name is Bob Edwards. I've lived in Pitt County and Greenville for 29 years now, and I just want to go on record, so to speak, saying that I would ask you to seriously consider repealing the ordinance, and I think for reasons that have been more than adequately explained already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Anyone else like to speak? Okay. Being no more speakers, the public comment period is closed, and we will now move to consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor Protem. On the consent agenda tonight, we have item number one, approval of the minutes. Item number two, resolution authorizing an application to the Federal Transit Administration for a federal grant for fiscal year 2024, low or no emission notice of funding opportunity. And item number three, contract with Cherry Beckett LLP for auditing services for fiscal year 2023 and 2024.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
I was going to pull one, just, just have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that okay? Can I pull number three quickly, just one question?
Motion to approve items number one and two, with number three being withdrawn.
Second.
Councilmember Blackburn's motion.
And then for item number three, I just wanted to ask, is this our previous auditor?
It's a motion on the floor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
All right. Motion passes six zero.
Okay. Council.
Okay, moving on to item number three, contract with Cherry Beckett LLP for auditing services for fiscal year 2023, '24. I'll call forward Chief Financial Officer Jacob Joyner to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. This is going to be very anticlimactic. I just wanted to ask, this is, is this the same auditing firm that we've had?
Yes, ma'am, for about eight years now.
Thank you, that's what I thought. Thank you very much. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Blackburn, seconded by Councilmember Robinson.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, Mayor Protem, moving on to new business. Item number four, Little League Softball World Series Agreement Extension. I'll call forward Director of Public, no, our Executive Director of Recreation and Parks and Capital and Facility Planning, Don Ockdonovan, for a presentation.
All right. Good evening again, Mayor Protem Daniels and members of council. Tonight, I'm here to give a presentation on a Little League Softball World Series Agreement Extension. Before I do that, just wanted to do a brief review of the Softball World Series for everyone. As we all know, it's played at Elm Street Park, Stalling Stadium. Last year's event saw the Pitt County Girl Softball Team, Pitt County Girl Softball League Team, which is in the bottom left there, reach the championship game on Sunday, which was televised nationally on ABC. Great opportunity for us to showcase the park, plus our, our great community. Pitt County ultimately lost to a very good New England team from New York, but I hear they're coming back and hoping to be stronger even this year. This event, which lasted over a week, was a success due to the many partners involved. I'll talk about some of those partners later on the presentation. Specifically, city support includes the assistance from police, fire rescue, public works, the city manager's office, and of course Recreation and Parks. For most departments, the planning starts nearly six months before the event, and several logistical details have to get finalized prior to the, with all of our community partners. During last year's event, every department was represented in some capacity, as city staff served in different roles to help make this successful World Series for all the coaches, players, and their families. In total, there were over 300 volunteers who assisted with the city Greenville staff, along with our local Little League team as well. Also, Andrew Schmidt, President and CEO of Visit Greenville NC, who's also here tonight, he and his staff did a great job of using this opportunity to promote Greenville as a destination location. Economic impact for Greenville due to the tournament last year was 1.2 million. Now, the city's 32nd commercial aired 201 times in four states across all ESPN networks, including the championship game, again, that was nationally televised on ABC. Social media metrics shown here, reached over two, 2 million social media accounts, and also reached 719,000 individuals throughout the, the promotion of the event. Just some details of the agreement. This extends the initial letter of understanding an additional two years through December 2027. That outlines the responsibilities posted to Little League Softball World Series free charter partnering organizations, which includes Forest of City, Little League Baseball, Greenville Little Leagues, and Greenville-Pitt County Sports Commission. Another partner in this is also East Carolina University, who provides the housing in partnership with Little League Baseball for all the coaches and players throughout the tournament. City Greenville specific responsibilities include maintain and provide access to all city facilities, provide transportation for players, coaches, umpires, and support all logistical planning and permitting for all tournament needs. Big part of this event is the partnerships that we have. Through this partnership, several facility improvements have been made in our plan for Elm Street Park and Stalling Stadium. To date, the total improvements is nearly $500,000. Some of them have taken place, some of them will be taking place this year. They include new field lights provided by Little League Baseball in partnership with Musco Lighting, improved player warmth area provided by Little League and the city, various improvements to Stalling Stadiums by our city staff at Recreation and Parks. Also, this fall, we'll be working on baseball irrigation improvements for the baseball field, as well as drainage improvements for the park and baseball field. I got to at least share that this year's tournament is August 4th through 11th, and each one of you will get a, an invite to have a great opportunity to volunteer with us during the tournament, so we hope to see you there. Dress, dress cool, because it's very hot. And tonight, our recommendation is to authorize city staff to sign an agreement extension with Little League International, Greenville Little Leagues, Greenville-Pitt County Sports, to continue hosting the Little League Softball World Series through December of 2027. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I'll make a, oh, questions. I was going to make a motion.
Any questions for staff? Okay, since there's none.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made by Councilmember Blackburn, seconded by Councilmember Scully.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion passes six zero.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Next item is item number five, resolution authorizing submission of an Inflation Reduction Act Environmental and Climate Justice Community Change Grants Application to the United States Environmental Protection Agency, an authorization to execute an agreement upon award. Call forward Director of Engineering Lisa Kirby for the presentation.
Very good. That was mouthful, wasn't it?
Yes.
All right. Well, I'm excited to be here this evening to discuss a new opportunity for the city of Greenville, and that's the EPA's Office of Environmental Justice and External Civil Rights Community Change Grants. So in summary, the EPA received $3 billion through the Inflation Reduction Act to fund environmental and climate justice activities to benefit disadvantaged communities. Important facts include that they have $2 billion available for the Community Change Grant Program nationwide. Project awards are anticipated to be between $10 million and $20 million, and there is no local cost share match. So the goals of the program are manifold. The two I'll call attention to are, the first one, funding community-driven pollution and climate, climate resilient solutions, and investing in strong cross-sectoral collaborations with partners working with and for communities. The eligibility requirements include complying with the content and submission requirements of the application, obviously, meeting the eligibility and statutory partnership requirements, which we'll discuss more in the coming slides, meeting threshold criteria, including that the projects will benefit disadvantaged communities, and projects must be completed within three years' time limit. I will note, applications to conduct scientific research, assessment, removal, or remediation of superfund sites, and permanent community relocations are ineligible for the project. So let's jump into statutory partners. That's the first step of the application process. Applicants must either be a partnership of two community-based nonprofit organizations or CBOs-- Applicants must either be a partnership of two community-based nonprofit organizations or CBOs, or a partnership between a CBO and a federally recognized tribe, local government, or institution of higher education. So as you can see, our partnership is depicted in the third row, a CBO and the local government. Partnerships must be documented and meet certain legal requirements. The lead applicant will enter into a sub-award with the statutory partner. The second step is identifying collaborating entities, right? So additional sub-awards from the lead applicant to other entities will be necessary to implement and perform specific grant project activities identified in the application. These entities would be responsible for individual components of the project. So they'll actually be a sub-awarty of the grant. So how it all works, let me put it all together, and I'll give you an example. And this is just a very high-level example, because we have not pulled together stakeholders and met as a team. But if the city of Greenville, as the lead agency, decides to build a facility to house engineering and act as a secondary EOC, we could enter into a statutory partnership with a nonprofit, like the Red Cross, for example, to co-locate a warehouse or distribution center in North Greenville. The city may award additional sub-awards to collaborating partners, like Sound Rivers, for the design and installation of stormwater control measures that filter and clean stormwater runoff. The other critical component is demonstrating the project will benefit a disadvantaged community. Those communities are defined by the EPA IRA Disadvantaged Communities Map. A disadvantaged, unincorporated community, as well as a farmworker community, could also qualify but aren't relevant for our current situation. The project must ensure that residents of the disadvantaged communities in the project area receive the benefits of the investments, and that they have the opportunity to build on them for current and future generations. So along those lines, there are six objectives for the grant. One, increase community climate resilience. Two, reduce local pollution and improve public health. Three, center meaningful community engagement. Four, build community strength. Five, reach priority populations. And six, maximize integration across all projects. With those five objectives, or I'm sorry, six objectives, these are the six components that were required for any application to be complete. So one, you must have a climate action strategy submitted. You must have a pollution reduction strategy. Three, a community engagement and collaborative governance plan. Four, community strength plan. Five, a readiness approach. And six, a compliance plan. Moving forward into the application process, application actually opened in November of '23. They'll close November of '24. So we have until November of '24 to submit an application on the city's behalf and the collaborating partners. Applications are reviewed as they are submitted. So it is a rolling application period. That's great, in that there is no delay in our review. There also is no hard deadline that we have to meet, as long as we meet November '24. What I will point out, though, that is because it's a rolling opportunity, what that means is the EPA will not guarantee that they will have funding available in July, September, October, whatever it may be, because they're awarding them as they come in. I say that to say there is an urgency in preparing an application and getting it submitted, even though it's open until November of '24. So let's talk a little bit about what our initial thoughts are, that we could potentially use the grant for. So Azureware North Greenville experiences significant impacts from flooding associated with the river. So if you draw a line from north to south across the river at Memorial Drive, you can see from this picture the different floodway, flood hundred-year floodplain and 500-year floodplain. So the striped areas are floodway from the river. The light blue is how far the 100-year floodplain reaches, and the yellow is the 500-year floodplain. So if you imagine that line that I was talking about, north-south, kind of at Memorial Drive, what you quickly recognize is that the 100-year floodplain on the north side of the river is 1.64 miles wide. It is simply .06 miles to the south of the river. That all has to do with topography. But what it shows is the impact that our community has in flooding is certainly experienced north of the river. It's more impactful, so. There has also been a few occasions where staff has been concerned and fearful that bridges would close, and there would be little to no access in a natural disaster north of the river. All that being said, there's the opportunity potentially to locate a facility in North Greenville that'll provide the following: a secondary emergency operations center, warehouse distribution space for a nonprofit, space for staging community resources in an emergency, offices for the engineering department during the day. And the facilities will include green technologies to be energy efficient, resilient to climate change, and reduce stormwater pollution and flooding. The goal would be to identify key players in our community that could be brought together to foster these ideas, expand on them, and refine them for the application process. Through our brainstorming, these were some of the groups that we have identified that could be part of this process. We're certainly open to other suggestions from council. That being said, we're asking council to adopt the resolution authorizing the submission of the Inflation Reduction Act Environmental and Climate Justice Community Change Grant Application to the EPA and authorize, unauthorized, to execute an agreement upon award.
Any questions for staff? On motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman, Councilmen. I'm sorry, Liz. Robert sent a second by Councilwoman Blackburn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. I love this idea. Fingers crossed.
Yes. Next item, Mr. Manager?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem. Next item is item number six, first reading of an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter Nine of the title, None Stormwater Management and Control Ordinance. Call forward Civil Engineer Three, Daryl Norris, for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. I'm Daryl Norris in the Engineering Department. What I'm bringing to you tonight is the first reading of an update of our stormwater management ordinance. There will be two readings to meet the statutory requirements for this ordinance update. And we'll do public hearing on Thursday for this ordinance. As I go through this presentation, you may find it familiar. It's the same presentation we did in the workshop. So it's to go back over this, refresh your memory on what this ordinance is, these changes are. Currently, our stormwater ordinance is influenced by some overarching regulation from the state and the federal government. Our MS4 Phase II permit from the federal government has certain requirements. The Tarpan Nutrient Sensitive Waters Program that we are mandated by the state to implement has other requirements. And then some of those requirements overlap together. The state updated their nutrient-sensitive waters rules. And as a result, they're requiring that all of the communities subject to those rules also update their ordinance. That was the impetus behind these ordinance changes. One of those things is that we are now named in the NOOSE nutrient-sensitive waters, as well as the Tarpan. So that adds additional level of overlapping regulation. They also changed some specifics of the regulation, adding in high-density thresholds as well. And I'm gonna go through some details about what's changing in the ordinance, what's required by the state, and some local options that we're proposing. Before we got to a completed ordinance, we spent a long time with a stakeholder committee, going into every detail of this ordinance, every word, and ensuring that it's the most complete. The objectives of the committee were to satisfy the state and federal regulation, review the ordinance and policies, and make the changes. We had developers, engineers, and others on the committee. Met for an entire year, 12 meetings once a month to go through. And these were no short meetings. These were long, two- to four-hour meetings going through this ordinance and stuff, as much as I could keep them on the call. Part of the state's rule changes that required us to update our ordinance, it added nutrient loading limits for the NOOSE, as well as the Tarpan. You see this picture. The green is what drains into the Tarpan River. The orange colors are draining to the NOOSE River. Greenville is fortunate to be located in both. It adds in compliance of these rules if there's no net increase of runoff volume for new development. It encourages low-impact development and infiltration. There's other parts of the ordinance that encourage use of those techniques. There are certain rule changes that involve water quality controls. We'll get into it in a minute. I'll show you some additional local options and some ordinance pertaining to stormwater control measures, operation, and maintenance. One of the things that the new rules do is also allows for public-private partnership development agreements as a method of compliance. So where there are those big projects, where the city is working with a private partner, we can work with them to achieve compliance with the rules. It establishes built-upon area, existing built-upon area, essentially grandfathering in that built-upon area that's already on the ground. We're regulating new, not existing. The effective date of what is existing will be upon the effective date of this new ordinance, which is proposed to be July of 2024. The ordinance exempts existing development and redevelopment. So redevelopment would be removal of built-upon area and replacement of equal or less built-upon area back. By built-upon area, we're talking about impervious. This is rooftop, asphalt, gravel, driveways, concrete, things like that. Part of the other changes, it established a high-density, low-density threshold. And that's basically 24% built-upon area is what separates low-density from high-density. Low-density also requires that stormwater is discharged through vegetated conveyances, so basically a grass swale, or to a level spreader of some sort. High-density will require a primary stormwater control device. This is a little bit different than our current rules, and can have some major impacts on some development. Primary stormwater devices are things like wet ponds, wetlands, bi-retention cells, sand filters, and infiltration devices. The new rules regulate the state's minimum design criteria. This was previously a manual of suggestions and guidance for developing these manuals. That is now put into rule, and this minimum design criteria is cited in this rule that development must follow. Another big point is it eliminates an exemption for downtown redevelopment districts. Previously, the city currently has two downtown redevelopment districts that are exempt from our nutrient program, and that exemption is going away with these new rules. In summary, the state rule changes are stricter nutrient and density requirements for development, establishing the minimum design criteria, providing more flexibility to meet those requirements. Even though the requirements are stricter, there's more flexibility in how you meet them, and then grandfathering that existing development. Some additional local options. While we're looking at this ordinance, making these changes, we looked at, well, what are the things that aren't necessarily required by the state that we can revise while we're revising it? And there's a unique program that not many communities use, and it's called impervious surface averaging. And what this does is it allows a developer to pair an undeveloped parcel with the parcel that they want to develop, and average the two out. And therefore, you use that to determine your density. What this does is it allows the developer to keep his proposed development as low-density, but it also gives value to those conservation lots, those undeveloped lots. It encourages the preservation and conservation of undeveloped lots. It gives value to lots that otherwise aren't valuable to be developed, environmentally sensitive areas like floodplains and wetlands that could easily be put in these conservation areas to help offset the more appropriate developable land. We also looked at a fee-in lieu option for our detention ordinance. So we currently, Greenville, have a very aggressive detention ordinance to try to minimize flooding and the impact that new development would have downstream and flooding in the community. As a result, sometimes it requires detention to be installed and placed where it's not the most effective. And it would be more effective if we could take the money that's spent on that detention and put it into other projects and places where we've identified in our watershed master plans that we could really use that money, and it would be much more effective than the private development having to put that detention in. So we said, wouldn't it be great if they could pay a fee-in lieu in certain cases? Now, we also looked at that and said, we don't want this to turn into a, I can pay to play and buy my way out of the ordinance and impact my neighbors. So as a result, we looked at it and said that in order to use the fee-in-lie option, there must not be any capacity issues for stormwater and drainage downstream of your proposed development, so that you're not going to be negatively affecting the neighbors downstream. So then we mapped that, based on our watershed master plan. The areas in red are upstream of capacity issues. So currently, the areas in red would be ineligible for using the fee-in-lie program. However, as we continue to make improvements in our stormwater program and do capital projects that we bring to you all the time, we anticipate this red area getting smaller and smaller with every improvement that we make, making it more and more available for these fee-in-lie options. Currently, we have some exemptions to those peak-flow requirements that being adjacent to a floodway exempts you from having it, and a less than a 10% increase. Because we're adding the fee-in-lie option as another alternative, we actually are eliminating these exemptions. Some of these exemptions were intended to let that water get downstream in a hurry and get out of town before it, you know, before the rest of the water comes down the hill. But our floodways extend far to the upper reaches of our stream, and so this exemption was actually horrible. So we feel like this would increase fairness to eliminate that. In summary, our additional local options were to provide more flexibility to meet the state's requirements, generate revenue for projects to better protect the citizens through those fee-in-lie options, protect the owners and the environment, and an efficient utilization of stormwater investments. Put the money where it works best. Finally, we looked at our stormwater control measure, operation, and maintenance. These are the ponds that you see, the wet ponds, the wetlands, the things like that. One of the things we are adding is to require existing stormwater control measures to be compliant prior to a CO of something draining to it, prior to additional development draining to a pond. That pond, if you're taking credit for it, needs to be compliant. And it may have been built 20 years ago. It needs to be compliant today if you're gonna take credit for draining to it. Also, establish a one-year warranty for stormwater control measures to hold that developer responsible for that critical initiation period of that measure. And create a handoff procedure from that developer to the final owner, which is often an HOA. Finally, we're clarifying the acceptance and Finally, we're clarifying the acceptance and erosion control process for phase development, ensuring that once those stormwater control measures are converted from erosion control into their final form, that they are protected and they're maintained and maintainable. Requiring annual inspections of all stormwater control measures. Currently, we do water quality measures, but we don't do detention-only ponds. We don't do annual inspections of those. This proposes to perform annual inspections or have the owners perform annual inspections of all stormwater control measures. And allow additional certification from NC State to count as a qualified professional to do those inspections.
Is that what the tie is for?
I'm sorry?
Is that what the tie was for?
Yeah, yes. I would say as a proud Wolfpack alumni.
I see, I see.
I'm very proud of our success recently. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to say that.
You know, I do what I can.
The city currently doing annual inspections of all our water quality measures because we're going to add in all these detention measures, we're going to inspect with city staff every three years of every type of pond or more often than that if needed. Because the city's only going to inspect them once every three years, it puts more importance on the owner's inspection, the owner's engineer's annual inspection. Therefore, we establish a procedure and consequences for improper inspections and qualified professionals and how they are to perform those inspections and turn in those records to the city. Some accountability there. Overall, our goals were to maximize the city resources while ensuring compliance, provide more education and protection for those stormwater control measure owners, clarify the responsibilities of the owners and the city and the developers as well. The next steps for this ordinance, obviously, tonight is our first reading, and on Thursday, we will have a public hearing and a second reading and hopeful adoption. This ordinance is proposed to become effective July 1st, 2024. I will note, this ordinance has been submitted to the Department of Environmental Quality with the state. It has been submitted to the Environmental Management Commission of the state and has been reviewed and approved for adoption by city council in its format with the caveat that it must become effective by no later than, I think, July 3rd. So as a result, we're bringing this to you tonight to give us plenty of time to make sure everything goes smoothly. In the meantime, before it does go effective, staff will be providing education workshops and training for developers and community members as we get closer to those dates because new rules is a new ballgame. So we have to get everybody up to speed on what all the new rules are. I do want to take this time to thank the Stormwater Regulatory Committee who gave all those hours in developing this ordinance and looking at our program as a whole. You will see some names that you may recognize on that list. And finally, our recommendation is that we, the council, adopt the ordinance to repeal and replace the entire Stormwater Management Ordinance, Part II, Title IX, Chapter IX of City Code, the Stormwater Management and Control Ordinance.
We do that tonight as well as have a public hearing Thursday.
We would take a preliminary vote tonight, and then we would have the public hearing on Thursday. You'd vote to formally adopt it at that point.
Well, I'm going to, would love to make a motion to approve.
Let me ask a question real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, number. I noticed you said that education comes with violations if there's more than three for the inspections.
I can scroll back up to that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So the idea there is these qualified professionals who are submitting their annual inspections, if we get three improper inspections from those qualified inspectors, they would be suspended for 12 months and have to do some in-person training with city staff to ensure that the inspections they're turning in to us are proper and correct.
So there are no monetary.
No, we wouldn't have any authority to do that. What we could do is essentially, and by suspend, we just no longer consider them a qualified professional until they've gone through that training with us. So those inspections, if we were to receive more from that individual prior to that, we wouldn't count those as meeting their obligation for submitting annual inspection.
Thank you. And that's for the inspectors, not the.
Correct.
Properties, okay. And what does CO stand for?
Certificate of Occupancy.
Any other questions for staff?
I just had some comments.
Go right ahead.
Before I made.
Councilwoman Blackburn.
Before I made the motion to approve, I just wanted to compliment Daryl, Mr. Norris, on his work with Stormwater with the Environmental Advisory Commission. He meets with us every month, and you know, stormwater, you know, in the public, you might think, well, snooze, you know, why is stormwater important? Why is it interesting? Why should I pay attention? But it is really, it is truly essential to how our community works and how we mitigate pollution and how we make sure we don't have flooded streets and hazards to our folks. And so I just really want to commend the work that went into rewriting this and commend the state basketball team, just got to do that, got to do that. They did a remarkable job, and I was so sad to see them not go further, but they just won my heart this year. And with that, I wanted to make a motion to approve this new ordinance.
Motion made by Councilwoman Blackburn, seconded by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All those opposed?
Motion passes 6-0, preliminary of those.
Madam Manager, next item. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Manager, I'm sorry. I'm still getting used to it.
I'll go with that slide.
I would have waited.
First last, not you.
Thank you, Mayor Prochey. Item number seven, Discussion on Data Processing Center and Modular Data Processing Facility Standards. I will call for Chief Planner, Shontae Gooby, to begin her presentation.
One second. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a follow-up from a discussion item at your March 11th council meeting. Just to give you a little bit of background information, I know you've heard this many times, but I'll go through it again. In January 2022, the city adopted an ordinance which established the definitions and also the standards for the modular data processing facilities and data processing centers. And so again, this is a follow-up from your March 11th meeting. City staff provided a presentation to you. We identified standards for the city as well as for other jurisdictions in North Carolina. So I just want to talk again just a little bit about the differences of the use. So a data processing center is what you see on your left-hand side. So you could consider this self-contained. So computers, the servers, all of the, I'm just going to call the guts of the operation, is inside a building. And then you also have a modular data processing facility. And the difference to that is just in the appearance. So the computers and the servers are going to be located in storage containers. Currently, in our standards, this kind of use would have to be on at least 35 acres. And so you could have multiple shipping containers with the servers inside of them. And again, this is the inside view, so you can just see stacks of servers. And again, this is a photograph of the modular style. I'm going to go through just a couple of slides of the standards, and I'm going to start off with there are many standards that are similar to both of the uses. So both of these types of uses are permitted. And so this is the table of uses, and you can see there are four-piece, meaning that that's a permitted use in the industrial districts in the city. And then also, there is a 2,500-foot separation from schools or single-family dwellings. 2,500 feet is roughly a half mile. We also have noise and lighting standards. A study, or excuse me, a sound study can be required at the discretion of the Planning and Development Services Director. And then also, if it ties onto the electric grid, then it also has to have approval from Greenville Utilities. And then just a few other standards that are specific to the modular, and that is they have to have, or they have a 100-foot setback. They also have a buffer yard, which is a 50-foot evergreen shrub, and again, minimum of 35 acres. And so now, what I want to do is go through, these are jurisdictions that have regulations about these uses. I want to tell you just sort of how the table is set up, and then I'll go through them. So on the left-hand side, I've given you the jurisdiction. And then the next two columns is just if they have regulations specific to crypto or if they also have standards related to data centers. I'm also going to give you a synopsis of the standards that they require, and then also if the modular type use is allowed. So I'll start with Pitt County first. They do have a specific standards to crypto. They also mentioned data centers. They have a 1,300-foot setback from residences, church, and schools. They require a sound study. They require eight-foot security fence and a veg buffer. They do allow modular. For the city of Lenore, they have standards specific to crypto and allow data centers. They only allow this use in their heavy industrial district, and they have a 15-foot buffer, and they allow modular. And then for Graham, they have standards specific to crypto and data centers. They have a 250-foot separation from single-family, schools, daycares, and hospitals. They require a vegetative buffer. They do not allow modular style. Henderson County, again, they have standards specific to crypto. Their standards are 1,000-foot setback from dwellings or residential zoning districts and daycares, two miles from a school, eight-foot sound wall, and they do not allow modular. Haywood County, again, they have standards for crypto and data centers. They have a 750-foot setback, 1,000-foot setback from vulnerable populations. And in their ordinance, those are described as schools, assisted living, how, excuse me, hospitals. They have a 20-foot veg buffer. They do allow modular. And then for Jackson County, which is where Cherokee is located, specific standards for crypto and data centers, 50-foot setback, 20-foot vegetative buffer, six-foot fence, they do not allow modular. And then this last slide are jurisdictions that either have a moratorium or a ban. So in Cherokee County, they have a moratorium that ends this October. Their standard, obviously, they don't have standards at this point because they do have a moratorium. Buncombe County, they have a moratorium that's going to end next month. McDowell County, they have a ban. That became effective January of this year. And then Clay County, they have a ban, and that was effective August of 2022. And again, since these are counties, these standards are only subject to the county. It's not subject to any of the small towns or cities that might be located in those counties. This is just a simple summary of what I've just went over. Again, the standards in North Carolina, as far as these different jurisdictions, they vary widely between the zoning districts the uses are allowed in. They vary widely on any kind of required vegetation, any kind of sound mitigation, and then also if they allow the modular style or not. And so for the ones I've shown you up on the screen, you'll notice that many of these counties are located in the western section of the state. They're very sparsely populated. Most of them do not have comprehensive plan or zoning regs. In the moratoria or the bans, they have cited a lack of public infrastructure, such as electricity. They've cited a lack of services, meaning fire departments. And again, as I mentioned, so for those counties, that is only for the properties that fall under the county's jurisdiction. And then data mining activities by private citizens are still permissible. And then at that meeting, again, staff offered your input on some next steps, and we just sort of rounded these out with keeping the current standards, repealing the standards, moratorium or a ban of the use, or modifying those standards. And so I'll just go through these quickly. Always, you can keep the standards you currently have in place. Another option would be to repeal the standards. And so I've got a couple of slides to go with this, but repealing the standards, what that means is all the standards that I have just talked about would be erased from the books. Since data mining or cryptocurrency are lawful uses in North Carolina, we do have an option for what would be a special use permit option, and I'm going to talk about that in a second. We also have, I guess, a consequence, I could say, which is a data mining or cryptocurrency could also try to qualify as an operations processing center, and I've got a slide for that. I'm going to get there. We've talked about a moratorium or a ban. Again, that has legal processes that you have to do, potential legal challenges. And then the last thing would be to modify the standards that you have. And again, and staff has some examples of that for you as well. So we talked about repealing the standards. And so within the city's table of uses, we have what's called our otherwise-not-listed category. And so this could apply to any use that's a lawful use within North Carolina that's not specifically listed in our ordinance. And so as far as for data mining or cryptocurrency, data processing, whatever you call it, it would fall under letter E, which is in the yellow box, and that says, other activities, industrial uses not otherwise listed. You can see there's S's in each of those boxes, so that means a special use permit would be required. Your special use permit is from your Board of Adjustment, so that means there would not be any type of city council being involved in the decision-making process. And also what that means is the standards that we went through come off of the books. The second thing that we talked about was the possibility of this type of business trying to qualify as an operations processing center. And at the bottom, this is the definition for this use. This use has been on the books for over 20 years. I'm going to say it's a very antiquated use. It talks about processing checks and coupons and things like that. And this is really more of what you would think of almost as a person helping to process these pieces of paper. It's not processing data on a computer. However, with that said, a company who is trying to do this could look at this use and potentially try to qualify. This use is allowed in nine different districts across the city, and it's a permitted use. There are no other standards with this use. And then for that, I'm going to defer to the city attorney, Aminun McGirt. He's got a few slides to go over, and then I think I have two more slides after that.
Thank you, Ms. Gooby. Mayor and council, this slide right here deals with General Statute 169, 107, which talks about the requirements and findings that the city would have to make to adopt a moratorium ordinance. And so the standards are a clear statement of the problems or conditions necessitating the moratorium, what courses of action other than a moratorium were considered by the city, and why those alternatives were not chosen. Second standard, a clear statement of the development approvals subject to the moratorium, and how a moratorium on those approvals will address the problems that led to its imposition. Third, finding an express date for termination of the moratorium and a statement setting forth why that duration is reasonably necessary to address the problems that led to the moratorium. And the last finding is a clear statement of the actions and the schedule for those actions proposed to be taken by the city during the moratorium to address the problems. Next slide. So in order to adopt a moratorium, it requires public notice and a public hearing. It must be reasonable, and it must be based on issues specific to the city. Renewals or extensions of moratoriums are prohibited unless the city has taken reasonable and feasible steps to address the problems or conditions that led to the moratorium. The statute also authorizes expedited judicial review for any person injured by the moratorium. And so zoning laws, the presumption. And so, you know, zoning laws, the presumption is zoning laws by the U.S. uh, uh Supreme Court and North Carolina common law says that zoning laws are presumed to be, to be constitutional and valid and reasonable unless they are arbitrary. So the presumption is when you adopt a zoning ordinance, it is legal and is, and is, and is authorized and is valid. But when you adopt a moratorium, that shifts that presumption of legality to the city to prove that, that you have complied with the statutes. Uh, and also um development approvals, if you did adopt a moratorium, if, if some, if a developer already has a building permit or has taken some action to start, in this case, a data processing facility, if they do that right tomorrow, it would not be subject to a moratorium that you take action on later. Um, now, this is the recommendation of the city. The recommendation of the city has been not to pursue a, a moratorium or a ban. Now, why is that? Because under the statute we just looked at, the city has not identified problems showing a moratorium or ban is necessary. And as, as, as the statute also talked about, if you go back a couple of slides, you see in, in this, the first finding, it says you have to state the problem, and you have to show why those alternatives were not chosen. Um, so the legal advice is that the city has alternatives to a moratorium already in place. What are those alternatives? Well, number one, under the current code for uh data processing centers, it's limited to industrial zones. It's only limited to, to four zones, which are, are all industrial in nature. The second uh point about alternatives to a moratorium is that there are limitations in the ordinance on noise, uh, it requires a sound study, and there are height restrictions. Also in the ordinance, there are buffer or setback requirements. The facility has to be located twenty-five-hundred feet from a school or a single-family residence. It has lighting requirements. It requires approval from GUC if it's, if it's connected to the electrical grid, and some of the additional protections that are in the ordinance, if it's a modular data processing facility, it has to be on a site that is a thirty-five-acre site with a hundred-foot setback. Um, so when you look at, ta take all that into totality, there are just limited um parcels as of record right now in, in the city's zoning jurisdiction where you could set up a data processing facility. Um, so that's why the advice has been a moratorium or ban is, is not authorized, because the burden shifts to the city, and there are alternatives in place. But how, however, I want to say this, you know, this is a legislative decision, and this is a decision of the council. And um so, uh, please, please know that. So, but I'm just telling you what the legal advice is, that there are legal concerns. Um, uh, other factors. This ordinance has been on the books for two and a half years, and um, I think since January of twenty-twenty-two, and there have been no applicants to, to utilize the use yet besides Compute North, which uh I think went bankrupt. So right now, since Compute North left, there have been no other applicants who have come to the city to state that they were going to set this use up. Um, the city attorney's office opinion that the standards presently are reasonable, they're legally defensible, uh, it provides mitigation uh for potential impacts that could negatively harm the public, as you heard the public talk tonight, and it protects the public health and safety. So that's the legal opinion, but again, this is a legislative decision, and um the, the city attorney's office will, will defend whichever route the council wants to go, but the legal opinion is that there's, there's a legal risk here, and the, the standards that are in place, um, are alternatives that protect the public.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McGirt. Um, and I think Shante's got a couple more slides.
We've got two more.
Okay.
Very quick. Um, and so I've talked about briefly, my little red line got put in the wrong place there. Um, so there are uh two modifications that staff is bringing to you, um, based on the discussion that, um, that we've had, and that might, and those might be, uh, number one, to increase the twenty-five-hundred-foot separation to thirty-four-hundred, so you're going from about a half of a mile to about um two-thirds of a mile. And again, that would be from schools or single-family dwellings. And then another option would be to delete the standards associated with the modular style. So you're, you're not banning the use, but you're banning the, the appearance or the way that it is set up. So that's another option for you as well. And um again, this still keeps your current standards in place. It tightens them in a couple of places as far as uh with separation distance, and it also takes the modular style off the table. And I will leave this again with, um, uh, you know, staff is asking for your input as to, what's your pleasure?
Just questions. Councilwoman Blackburn. No comments? Not comments yet. Just a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
When we take modular data processing, when we repeal all the standards, at that point, does that throw modular data processing back to the Board of Adjustment, or are we saying, you know, what are we, are we, what are you saying, you, you can't operate that way here in Greenville?
Are, are you saying, I just want to make sure I understand, are you saying repealing all the standards?
What you had just, what, what we've talked about, which is
This, this slide, right here?
Uh, delete all standards associating with modulator data processing facilities. My understanding was that if we did this, it, it basically meant we're not banning a use, but we are banning a type of setup of that use.
Banning a facility, a type of
We're banning a type of facility. Is, do I have that correct?
Right. The way, the way it looks, right? Instead of shipping containers on a large piece of property, it would be, it would be what we would consider self-contained in a, in a building.
A brick and mortar.
You got to build a building. Okay. So we're not saying we're throwing it to Board of Adjustment at that point. We're saying this is
That's correct.
An appearance that is not
The form it would look.
Part of our code. Okay. Now, before we move on, I just, you know, I, I, I just want to commend staff and our attorneys and the, the members of the public and my peers on council. We've had so many conversations, and, and everybody has done so much research. It's just really, it's really very, it's, it's so admirable, and it's brought us together as a community. And it's something that, and I'll just use myself as an example, I had thought, um, we had talked about mora, um, moratoria, and one of the things that I had wanted to do was to have us define cryptocurrency mining, which maybe we still should do, you know, and we can talk about that when we're making our motions, but I had wanted us to define cryptocurrency mining as a use, and then to say this is a use not allowed in our city. And I've taught, I'm not an attorney, but I've talked to uh attorneys in different locations in the school of government, and I know my peers on council have also um talked with attorneys. And so my understanding is that we are not able to do that. And I just wanted us to maybe get further um word from our council, maybe some of my peers on council would like to weigh in with, with, with their understanding of that, because I think it's really important that, at least from where, where I sit, this is something that I had hoped to do, this is something that I had wanted to do, and this is something I feel like our community wants us to do. I think everybody who came up here tonight to speak said, please, please ban this. Please keep this out of our community. And I want you to know that, that we have heard you, and we have, again, from, from all of our staff members, to our attorney, to, to us sitting up here, we, we have, we, we hear you. My understanding is that as, as much as I, I can't speak for anybody else up here, but as much as I would like tonight to make a motion right now to say, we're going to define cryptocurrency mining, and we're going to list it as a use not permitted, my understanding is that we just don't have the authority to do that as a city. Without getting into the weeds, just, there are certain things that we just don't have the authority to do. The state hasn't given us that authority. We may not have the, the legal ability to do that. So I just wanted, that's really kind of a statement, but also kind of a question, um, if we need to address that further. I have my peers wanting to hear more about that. Maybe it's settled because of what our council just said.
I think it's pretty much settled. I, I, I do, i- if, Mr. Manager, I know there are others, guests that we've invited that the public may want to hear from.
Yeah, I, I believe that there was, um, there was a desire to uh find out more information about whether there was anything in the pipeline.
Correct.
And I think you heard uh, um, city manager, I mean, city attorney McGirt say that unless something has changed this afternoon, there have been no applications submitted uh to the city. We are not actively working with an applicant, a crypto applicant. Uh, we know, we, uh, we are not recruiting an applicant, we're not in any discussions with the GUC with concerns to a, a company coming here. Now, I'm not saying there's not something out there, but as far as, you know, at, um, working with an applicant, a, a crypto company, uh, talking to a crypto company, uh, uh, recruiting a crypto company, that's, the city's not doing that. But I also wanted to, um, bring um, uh, GUC and our ENC Alliance in here as well, uh, for, you have the opportunity to ask them any questions that you might want.
Yes.
So, uh, Chris Paget, the Assistant General Manager of GUC, is here, and we also have Josh Lewis, the President of the ENC Alliance, is here as well. So I would ask if, if Mr. Paget would like to come forward right now?
Yes.
You can ask him any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, I, I guess just kind of along the lines of uh what the manager set up there, uh, I can say that we, uh, right around the time Compute North, uh, had made application when the city council was considering standards, uh, there were a, a number of individuals and entities that reached out just to find out what was going on. Uh, shortly after council, uh, approved the standards, uh, that slowed considerably, and I don't think we've heard from anyone related to a data processing center in at least the last year and a half. Um, so there are new prospective projects out there that we've been contacted about in, in any form, uh, at this point. And, and I, I think, um, there's probably a couple of reasons for that. One is the standards that council adopted are, are relatively restrictive as compared to other areas, uh, and business flows to where it's easier to do business for that type of business. Uh, the other reason is the rate that, uh, that the cost of power for these types of uses, uh, has changed here in the last couple of years. We, uh, we, GUC, along with thirty-one other municipalities in the eastern part of the state, are a part of what's called NCEPA, the North Carolina Eastern Municipal Power Agency. And we collectively have a wholesale contract to purchase power from Duke Energy Progress. And, um, Duke Energy Progress, uh, a couple of years ago filed a, a, a rate case with FERC, the Fed, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Sorry to use all the acronyms. Uh, but long story short, that case was mainly about batteries, and batteries are becoming more, uh, abundant, uh, battery technology is advancing, and with the way our rates are structured here in this community, uh, Duke was concerned that, uh, people, individuals, and the utility would go purchase a bunch of batteries, charge them during the cheaper time to buy electricity, deploy them during the more expensive time, and that would upset the, the ebb and flow of, uh, uh, the, the character of the contract that we have with Duke. Um, so that, that case was finally settled, and what it did was it, um, said that any, any new load, uh, electric load above one megawatt, uh, that is fully interruptible, uh, that there's an additional charge to that. So these types of facilities, the reason that, that Compute North seemed like a match from an electric profile perspective is that they can shut down during those peak times, uh, when the power is more expensive, and that would lower energy costs for everyone on our system. Uh, but with this provision, the cost of power for a prospective, uh, entity like this has risen considerably, so we are probably not as attractive of, of a destination for that type of use moving forward.
So, Mr. Paget, just to be crystal clear.
Mm-hmm.
Currently, there are no recruiting efforts or discussions by GUC to have a, or for an applicant regarding crypto mining at this time?
That, that is correct. And, and just to be clear, we have never gone out and actively solicited and recruited a crypto miner.
Right, right.
Um, Compute North reached out to us based on some information they found on the internet about available electricity.
Okay. And so any information that we've received to the contrary of the statement that you just made would be incorrect?
It wa, it wa, to my, to my knowledge, um, i- if we don't know about them, and city staff doesn't know about them, those are the two entities that
That shouldn't
Somebody would need to come to, as well as the Alliance, right? That's another gateway potentially.
Right. Can we ask that question?
I'm sorry. Mr. Manager?
Yes, uh, Mr. Lewis
Thank you.
Is here.
I, I have
Okay.
Um, and I appreciate your answer to that question, but I want to take that one step further. Is there any desire by GUC to do business at this point with a crypto mining company on any level, anyhow, anytime?
We, so, someone earlier said that they've been fighting crypto mining for the last two and a half years. We, we have not. We have been out recruiting a number of different kinds of businesses and industries, none of which are crypto miners.
Yes, but a, a, a yes or no, like, is there any desire
We're, we're not out soliciting any business.
Not soliciting, but is there any desire to do, if there were an opportunity to come? If, is there any desire to do business with a crypto mining facility, if the option?
So we are a local utility provider.
Yes.
So any entity that comes to us that is a legally, uh, valid business that is permitted within the city of Greenville or Pitt County within our service area, you know, we have to serve them if we have the capacity available. So we aren't out looking for them, but if somebody comes to you and gets permitted, then it would be up to us to, to provide the services. We, we don't pick winners and losers. We, we don't go to the public and ask their opinion. When a prospective business or industry comes to us, uh, we provide the services. That's our role.
May I follow up on Councilmember Foreman's question, and, and Chris kind of putting you in the, in the hot seat, but I think really, she really kind of got at the heart of, of the issue here, and we're going to have, I'd like to have the same question for you as well, which is, you say, we're not actively recruiting. Well, is it something that we would like to have? And GUC, I know, operates differently than the city. We, we have services and, you know, that kind of thing, but I know GUC is concerned about revenue and expansion and capitalizing future progress, po, projects, and in that sense, is GUC interested in this kind of business and would see it as something that would be an asset?
I, I think with the former rate structure, uh, it would have been an asset in that uh, someone in the audience mentioned a revenue number of thirty-four million dollars for that particular business. The, uh, you know, really, you're talking about about five and a half million of margin there. That's three percent on our customers' rates. So the ability to, to bring in a project like that two and a half years ago would have benefited our customers' rates. With the change in the, the rate structure from our wholesale contract now, that's not the case. Uh, so we, we, we really have no appetite. That's why we're not out doing that. We've heard the community sentiment loud and clear, and, and we are, uh, again, we, we'll do what we're legally required to do, but we are not out soliciting, uh, this type of business.
And just, uh, my research has shown, again, I'm not a cryptocurrency expert or someone like yourself, an energy professional, but wha, what I've found is that rates have gone up where you've had cryptocurrency mining, and, and the stress on the grid has led to all ki, to, to many issues, many hardships, and hardships for, for people. And, um, I'm wondering if GUC, from the energy side of things, views those issues as important?
Well, I, every electric provider is structured differently. They have different wholesale contracts, so each one needs to look at the opportunity in front of them and evaluate it from a technical perspective. Uh, we did that. Uh, we, we have significant available capacity, uh, coming to us through the Duke system at our three-point-of-delivery substations. We had engineers look at everything, uh, right, every component. We sent people to Nebraska to look at existing facilities, to talk to the electric company there. So we, we did our due diligence there, and we still do not believe that had Compute North connected our system, it would have been negative in any manner. In fact, had they connected and then left six months later, we would have no stranded cost in the project. So So I continue to hear that. We addressed it two and a half years ago. We continue to hear the same information coming out because people do find examples where that's the case. But that was not the case for us. We did our due diligence, and we stand by that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, can you come forward?
Counsel?
Bring your question.
I'll leave with a couple of comments. One, you know, the Alliance is representative of the community. You know, we have a community board that represents the business community, the public sector. And I can say that from my time here, I can speak before, I've been here about 16 months or so, I have not had one conversation or one discussion with any other cryptocurrency operation. It's not a focus of ours. We have target sectors that we spend our resources trying to attract to the community, and this isn't one of them. But to piggyback a little bit on Chris's comments, I think several years ago, when cryptocurrency started to take off, there were a lot of communities trying to respond and making sure that they weren't missing out on opportunity to bring tax revenues to the localities. It's a new industry, as you can tell by the zoning and the legal arguments that you heard here today, that people are trying to be responsive. And I've always learned that if you want less of something, you regulate it or tax it more. If you want more of something, you tax it less or regulate it less. So in, you know, my opinion, I think the council is moving in the right direction if you want to prohibit those types of arrangements. And I can tell you from our perspective, we're not focused on it.
Any questions, Counsel?
I guess I would just kind of ask the same question I asked Chris. Would you consider this? I know you are all, you are, you are the economic development professionals in the same way that GUC is energy, are energy professionals. Do you consider this, given, you know, the increase in revenues and, you know, tax base and such, would you consider this a desirable industry for Greenville, Pitt County?
I would say our focus is bringing the maximum amount of capital investment in jobs, high-waist jobs to our properties. As folks on the council know, we have real estate. We make maneuvers. You know, I appreciate the last time I was here, the support on the shale building project that we're moving forward with. We can control the tenant. If somebody comes to us and asks us for information, we point them in the right direction. You know, legally, we can't discriminate if they are a, you know, a legal entity and allowed within a certain area. And so for us, you know, we will share information, but as I shared with our board, oftentimes these are incentive-driven or support-driven projects. If you do not support or incentivize, they'll go to other locations. If you have strenuous regulations related to their operation, they go to other locations. So again, for us, I think it was a new industry that was taking off. It's kind of a boom-bust. I heard a comment earlier from a public comment about the bust side of these things, and I haven't seen one. And we haven't talked to one, and I haven't engaged in any outreach to any. If they call our office and ask for information, we'll point them to the appropriate folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any counsel discussion?
I do, surprised. Counselwoman background. Shock. I just, I want to, I want to make some comments to frame our conversation. And then I know we will have a good conversation. Again, thanking staff for their work on this and thanking our GUC and ENC Alliance representatives as well. We've had a lot of conversation tonight about cryptocurrency mining. And I think the overwhelming opinion is that it's not seen as a positive asset for our community. I just wanted to go back and look at Compute North, what happened there. Compute North, when it went bankrupt, had $99 million, almost a billion dollars owed to its power company and another $46 million owed to 30 other entities. Fortunately, it was not us, but that's $1.5 billion that Compute North owed when it went bankrupt. That could have included us. And so there's a real urgency to our conversation because we were, that was very nearly us. $1.5 million in unpaid electricity bills, for instance, in Sweden, where a cryptocurrency mining company went bankrupt. These are called proof-of-work operations, and they've been responsible for as much as 27.4 million tons of carbon dioxide that's been dumped into our atmosphere. Bankruptcies are frequent. In, here in Greenville, Compute North could have consumed as much as 45% of our power. I know that Mr. Paget, again, he's an energy professional, but you're basically, in one fell swoop, doubling our power usage. That's like adding another city onto what we do. Is that, is that what we want to do? I believe that earlier, we had, where's Ann? Let it be known, I have my comprehensive land use plan. And I'm not even going to cite all the references, but I just will cite a couple. This is our book. This is our plan. And I've bookmarked all the places where it talks about things like environmental justice, sustainability, being a green city. But specifically in the environmental section, it says, Policy 6.3.2, "Consider energy savings proposals." Policy 6.3.5, "Consider, encourage energy efficiency." Policy 6.3.10, "Support green energy production." And then you get into, again, the greater issue of 6.6.1, "Promote environmental justice." So there's a lot more, and I'm not going to go into them all, but our basic book of who we are as a city is really counter to this kind of an operation. And that's really all I wanted to say because I feel that we've heard so much about crypto and kind of how nefarious it is. And I'm actually ready to make a motion, but we may want to have some more discussion before that.
Yeah. Any discussion? Any questions?
I think it would be helpful to explain a little more about why staff thinks it's, is advising us against a ban and a moratorium. I think we just need to talk a little bit more about that so everybody here understands. I saw a few question looks when we talked about that. And there are several smaller counties and municipalities in our state that have banned it and declared a moratorium. And I've learned that those are questionably justifiable because they don't have the resources and the infrastructure to support outright a crypto company like this. They don't have the grid to support it. They don't have the emergency services to support. And we do. And it is a legally allowed business in the state of North Carolina. And when there's illegal use, and we have to abide by the statutory rules about that. We're a statutory municipality. We have to follow state law. And so that's sort of where we're stuck here because we do not want this in our community. For the record, I do not want this in my community. It's a waste of electricity. It doesn't create jobs. It doesn't bring in any money to our community. And this day, when our planet is dying and we need to do all we can to support our environment, I can't stand behind this. But we have to follow the law and protect you, our citizens, from a lawsuit. So that's kind of where we are. I just wanted to flesh out a little bit more for myself and for those people here. And if there's any comments from manager or attorney to support.
Councilmember Scully, it might be worth Ms. Gooby to come back up and show the slide that, how we differentiate from many of the communities that you just spoke of and how it's not an apples-to-apples comparison.
Right.
That's why it's not as easy to say you can ban it or do a moratorium here as compared to how it's been done in another local government area. And then I'll ask City Attorney McGirt to come back up and just, again, just to kind of refresh everybody and those that are watching in the audience today, just what the legal standing is with concerns to a moratorium or ban.
Ms. Gooby?
Again, just as to what you were referring to, many of the cities, especially the last four, that we spoke about with the moratorium or a ban, again, western side of the state, very rural, not a lot of people, many of them like the comprehensive plan that we spoke about. A few of them even like zoning regulations whatsoever. When the use showed up at their doorstep, they had absolutely nothing on the books to prevent it. They did cite a lack of public infrastructure. Again, as Mr. Paget has spoke about, GUC and having a capacity, regardless of the use, they had the capacity. A lack of services such as fire department, first responders in case there were issues with the facility itself. And again, that did not, and then I don't think I have anything else to add, but I hope that that will just help to kind of recapture what you said.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that fairly. And then to follow up, do you have any additional things, Mr. McGirt? I'm sorry.
Go back to the slide of dealing with the city attorney's office recommendation. So, yeah, again, the recommendation is that the city has not identified problems showing a moratorium or ban is necessary, and the city has alternatives and the ordinance to protect the public. And tonight, they're asking for even more stringent regulations to protect the public if the council wanted to do that. But if you ban the use, again, zoning ordinance is presumed to be constitutional and valid, so a petitioner will have to show that it's invalid. And so the presumption is that the zoning ordinance is valid unless it's arbitrary. But if you ban the use or you go to a moratorium, then the burden shifts to the city to show that it's not arbitrary, and we would have to show a justification for that. And so the burden would be on the city, and that creates legal risk.
Just a question. One second. Go ahead. Do you have a question?
I understand fully what you're saying. And now, question. How likely is it for an entity to come after the city in a situation where they haven't made any investment? Where would that argument come from? How likely would it be for us to be sued from somebody that hasn't lost anything?
Yeah, well, definitely if somebody had started a development approval process, like acquired a building, a permit or something, or filed an application, they would have what you call a vested right. But also, if you had a business perhaps who has the authority to set up a data processing center and you just totally eliminate it from the books, they could, in theory, come up with some kind of theory to say that you violated their constitution. It's been arbitrary because the business has a right to, a lawfully operating business has a right to do business in North Carolina. If you take away that right and remove it as a use with no justification, somebody could probably still bring a claim. But again, this is the decision of the council. But there is some legal risk by just eliminating a use from the table of uses with no justification when we have alternatives to protect the public. And the Constitution talks about, you know, you have the rights to the fruit of your labors in Article I, a business has a right to conduct business. So there's some risk to just, it's one thing to repeal it, but if you ban it, you can't even apply in the city for the use.
Yes, sir. And the Constitution also says that businesses are not allowed to injure the public.
That's right.
So we're kind of stuck there. And I'm just, I just beg the question of, why would a cheapskate company spend money suing us when they should, would just go spend that money somewhere else in a community that would allow it?
And if I may, it's almost, isn't it a discrimination against that company? Would it be a discriminatory lawsuit that you're banning a legal entity?
Well, you, you know, when the North, when the School of Government dealt with this issue about banning a use, they said that it, in an article, they said it may indeed be arbitrary for a large city with a substantial industrial areas to totally exclude a particular industrial use. So it's an open question whether in North Carolina you can ban a use or not. But the School of Government said you have to take into account standards such as identifying the land use impacts of the use. So in this case, what type of negative impacts does this use have on the public? You have to also look at alternative measures to prevent the identified impacts. The city, we've been talking about, there are alternative measures to protect the public regarding limitations on noise, setback requirements. And you also have to look at the impact on excluding the use. You have to look at how that's going to impact a business that has the authority to operate. And you're saying you're not welcome in our jurisdiction. Is that reasonable?
And just to follow.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Scully actually got at it. There's an attorney sitting over there and one right in front of me, but that will not prevent me from trying to cite case law. My understanding is that there is case law saying that, to use the words that Councilmember Scully used, that federal case law supports local authorities' ability to, quote, "Regulate and prohibit injurious land uses." And that you talk about, you know, having a constitutional right. Owner's use of land shall not, again, the word injurious, shall not be injurious to the community. And I think we, again, not an attorney, but I think we've, we have illustrated that, in fact, it would be injurious to our community because of the noise and the fossil fuel power use and other threats, you know, to our power grid, that it is injurious to the community. Can you speak to that?
Well, I mean, zoning just deals with the policy of having uses that are incompatible, not injuring one another. So definitely, that's one of the policies that underpins zoning. But the, you know, the School of Government said this is, you know, there was a case called Robbins versus the town of Hillsborough where the town sought to ban an asphalt plant. And the court said that the burden shifted to the city, and it was a genuine issue of material fact, and the trial court needed to determine whether that decision was arbitrary or not. It went up to the North Carolina Supreme Court. It was decided on other grounds. So the School of Government, you know, the appellate courts in North Carolina have not addressed the issue of the standard of, you know, of banning a use. That's an open question. But the School of Government said, if you do this, you have to, the burden is going to shift to the city, and the city needs to show justification for doing it. So if you're going to ban a use, you would, I would advise, at least at the minimum, to a first step would be a moratorium, to have a public hearing and go through the steps to see if it's appropriate to ban the use.
Thank you.
So I do have a question, and I'm not sure if it's for you, Ashante. The modifications that we were looking at, can we add or modify the noise standards as well as add, like, time constraints to that, that, like, hours of operation?
We could, we could add those as far as your, you said the noise?
Yes. Like decrease the.
Lower the decibel level, is that what you're speaking to? We could, we could add that as far as we could roll that into the dough and lower those numbers for you.
Counsel, any conversation?
Comments? A lot of comments, probably.
Mayor Protem, was your, repeat your question. Was that just for the?
For the modification.
For the modifications, just for the decibels? Or was that also on time?
Yes, both time and.
Well, before, is it appropriate? Is it appropriate? Because you just had some specifics. You know, we're going to have more discussion, but I'd like to go ahead and get a motion on the floor for us to discuss if that's appropriate. I'd like to, I'd like to go ahead and move that we.
I'd like to comment before we do.
Okay, okay. Because I know we'll have more conversation, but I wanted to go ahead and get a motion on the floor.
I would say this. I think it would be, I wasn't here on the council when the ordinance was adopted, but I have been involved in litigation that I represented a business probably 35 years ago on an issue like we're dealing with now, wasn't a crypto, by the way. So the first thing I did, I wanted to go back and see what all this data mining was because I had to get educated. So what I've learned, and I think is pretty accurate based on the number of articles I've read, this crypto mining businesses, they go to places that don't have any regulations. They go to places that have really cheap energy, and they prefer environments that are cool and have low humidity because that helps with the cooling process. And so to my big surprise, and I think I would have known, but I didn't, Cherokee County is, I guess, like the case that we all look to. They didn't have any zoning laws at all, not just for crypto, but no zoning laws. They were like the wild, wild. They were like the wild, wild west, do what you want to, when you want to, where you want to, how you want to. And obviously, I think the crypto mining industry looked at the Tennessee authority that supplies electricity as really cheap, and they're a cool environment with low humidity, so they went there and located. And so all of a sudden, they're in a county with no regulations. And so I think Cherokee County was caught aback by that. And then if you go and start doing business, and then there's a regulations, you're grandfathered in. That's the phrase they use in the legal community. A moratorium in council, tell me if I'm not staying polite. A moratorium's, from a legal standpoint, is like, okay, let's put a halt on everything right now because we've got an emergency problem. It's kind of a temporary restraining order in the legal field. We see them in domestic violence cases. And let's say the neighbor wants to cut down this beautiful oak tree, and we're not sure on which property line it's on, but if we don't preserve it for the status quo, it's too late. So when I looked at our ordinance, we didn't do a moratorium. It would have been a good time, I think, at that time to do one because we were dealing with crypto and what it is and the adverse effects of it. And a moratorium, we, I've heard the word ban and moratorium used interchangeably. They're not the same. Ban means it's done forever. Moratorium means for a set period of time. So we could have done one, in my opinion legally, back initially in 2001 when this concept began to really put a study on this crypto industry and what should we do about it in terms of our regulations and how we should restrict it. We didn't do that. Instead, we drafted an ordinance, and from what I can tell from looking at other states and counties and even other countries, our ordinance is pretty good. I mean, certainly we can always tighten the belt on it. But for example, our noise ordinance is at 65 decibels, I think lower than 75. That's a normal conversation. I'm probably talking louder than that right now because I talk loud and I talk fast. And it's interesting when you look at it, if they're crypto, they're looking at, okay, our decimal is like that. I think one of you or several of you mentioned about the jets taking off. I think that's around 170 or 50 if I'm looking at the stats right. The school or house can be no closer than 2,500 feet under the current standard. That's a half a mile, basically. So that would be like us having a conversation, you being on the other side of the river, can you hear that? So that's a pretty stringent requirement on the noise aspect of it. I know that's not all the crypto is about, but certainly on that. So that's a pretty, pretty good standard. So in the two and a half years since that's happened, if I understand correctly, and what I did is, I know as elected members, y'all might know, we can find out things that y'all can't find out because we have availability. So I went and checked. There's nobody on the council that knows anything. I checked with staff. I went above and beyond. I checked with the ENC. I checked with the GUC. I went to the county, and then I went to business people that I trusted and said, is there anything going on with crypto coming here or anything like that that we need to be aware about? Because I will say this, and I'll put it, I've said it publicly, I'll say it privately. I'm not a fan of crypto thing. I can't remember, it might have been a gentleman that said he talked about, it's really a laundering effect for illegal money is what it is. It's not the only reason, but that's one of the primary reasons. So I'm not a fan of it. So we've got what I think is a pretty stringent ordinance. And so now, whether we like it or not, there is a statute in place, and it was enacted in 2005. Before 2005, it was implied that city and county boards could put moratoriums or a limited time halt on a business in order to study and enact an ordinance. Well, in 2005, that ordinance got enacted, and it has very specific things we have to be able to establish if we're going to say a moratorium is needed. And one of the first things is, we got to show and say and prove that what we have on the books now is not worth it. That's not what I say it is or any council member, it's what, it's not what council for the city says, it's what the statute says. And there's four areas. And if we've got a moratorium, if we've got a statute that hadn't been challenged and is on the books and is fairly stringent, I think one of the second stringents in the state with some of the setbacks, certainly we could tighten the belt on it. I'm pretty convinced we can't show the legal basis for a moratorium. And so if we enact a moratorium, we've done something illegal. Hands down, convinced of that. And it's the landowner that would file a lawsuit. The person who owns the land that's been approached by a company that wants to do business here, he files a lawsuit against the city of Greenville and all the council members and the mayor, and everybody's in charge of issuing the permits to challenge it in a courtroom saying, you're taking my property. It's called unlawful taking based on U.S. Supreme Court opinions. And at that point, the burden is on the city to come forward and show through evidence, not speculation and fear in other countries. But in our community, we have to show those four prongs have been proven. And if we can't, a couple of bad things are going to happen. Number one, they probably would strike down our ordinance as might being too restrictive. Number two, we wind up paying not only for our defense costs, but probably for the cost of the person who sued us, to sue us over an ordinance that clearly is unlawful. I mean, clearly the moratorium's illegal because we can't do it legally. And a ban, a ban is almost universally rejected because if the business is legal, and this is a legal business, whether you like it or not, we can't just outright ban it unless we've got some particular reason that we can't service it, and we couldn't show that either. So we're at a position that this is not me saying whether we like it. I've told you my position on whether I like it or not. But I'm looking at it from a standpoint of a lawyer who's done this 39 years in the courtrooms of our county and our state and outside the state, that there's no way we could win a lawsuit like this if it got filed. Do we want to take that chance? I would say not, particularly when you have an ordinance that two and a half years hadn't been challenged. And I will say the reason you're not is because they look at this and go, number one, it's crazy restrictive from their standpoint. We don't, I don't think it's restrictive enough, but it's restrictive. Number two, based on what Mr. Paget said about our increases in utilities, it's really cost prohibitive now for them to try and come here. Because as I understand, and some of you in the ordinance might know this, this crypto Bitcoin mining stuff, it just gets like a, it keeps getting bigger and bigger, so they demand more and more energy. So the cost would be more and more prohibitive based on the cost structure. And I do understand that there's a legal basis that charges them more than you charge our residential customers and that type of thing, so the residential customer doesn't buy it. So for those reasons, I can't vote for a ban on moratoriums because I don't think we have the legal basis to do it. Would I be in favor of extending the radius out from 2,500 to? Absolutely. Would I be in ban, in favor of a ban on these modular units that are just kind of standing free and probably louder than the ones built inside? I would be for that, absolutely. But I think from a standpoint of, do we ban them or moratorium, I don't think we can meet the legal requirements. And that's why I would be against that. But I'm more concerned about this from a standpoint. Since I came on this council, y'all have heard me say, and I will keep saying, I want to grow Greenville greater. I want to be in a structured way. I want to be in a good way so I can stand back and say my hometown of 63 years. Wednesday, 63 years is my birthday. I'm proud of it. And so in that regard, we send a bad message to the business community. If we start saying if we don't like something, whether it's legal or not, we want to ban them or put a moratorium on them. And that's what I'm really concerned about, is that if we start, there are going to be businesses that we don't like and we don't want here. And if they're legal, we can't, we can't say you can't be here, but we can't put a lot of restrictions on them. So that's my concern too, is the optics, this looks like for those who wish to do business with us. I'm not saying the crypto community, that's not, absolutely not. I'm saying others who go, well, if they don't like our business, are they going to ban us? Or, you know, that type of thing. So those are my comments. I'm all for Councilmember Blackburn's move to modify the ordinance. I'm all for that because I think as it is now, we're not going to see anybody come do business here. I mean, I'm not in that with those kind of restrictions because it's 65 decibels. I do understand the one in Cherokee, I've actually did a seminar up there probably four or five months ago and talked to some people up there about that. And apparently is no restriction on this, pretty dang loud like some of you in the audience yielded to. But our limit's at 65, so I think we've got a really stringent statute. I think our staff has done an excellent job to give us a shield and a sword to protect us from the crypto industry. And I think that's why in two and a half years, we hadn't had anybody calling in as best I can tell. And I'll sit here and say it, I don't know of anybody that's heard anybody wants to come here and locate. That type of business is even slightly knocking on the doors, sending out emails as far as I know. And I think I've checked pretty hard to make sure, because when we come up here and speak to you, I knew there was going to be a crowd or not. I want to be able to look at all of y'all and say, I've checked every avenue I know of, and I know a lot of people all over the state to see is something coming here and not. Apparently, I'm happy y'all go to Texas. Apparently Texas loves them, is real favorable towards them. And they are trying to do green energy with the big windmills and the solar, but Texas really likes it. So maybe the crypto here will go, will locate here, maybe they'll go to Texas, which I'd be happy with and call us. So I apologize to all y'all for taking so long, but that's my comments on it. I've put a lot of thought and research into it. And I'm all for Councilmember Blackburn's motion to try and change some of the standards.
Prior to your motion, at the request of a constituent, I did reach out to the attorney in Haywood County, who is not a fan of crypto, and he says the same things. It will be illegal to ban it as much as he dislikes it himself. So we have done our research. I voted against crypto the first time. If it came back, I would vote against it again. But I think we need to use wisdom when making these decisions. And in order to do right by the people, we have to do the right thing legally.
I would like to also say, you know, I said Wednesday when we were having this conversation that I wanted to address the elephant in the room. And if the elephant is not in the room and he's outside the door, I want to drag him in. And what that is, is that the reason we are having this conversation with this level of intensity is that we have, because of the way this has been handled in the past, lost a significant amount of community trust. We've lost community trust as it relates to our council in years past. It is obvious that our council has been weighted towards development and special interests. Like I said, we want to make Greenville greater. We want to, you know, bring business into Greenville. We all want Greenville to grow, but not at all costs. And most certainly, not at the expense of the quality of life of our citizens. That is why our citizens are here tonight, and that is why they voted the way they did in November. That is why we're sitting here. And so one of the things that we need to be very mindful of as we move forward with this and anything else is that we have got to slightly turn this ship. I said a few, I think it was last month we were having a conversation, and I talked about order of operations. In mathematics, there's an order of operations if you ever want to get an answer right. And in life, there's also an order of operations. And if we want to get it right, we have got to put our people first in everything that we do. That is why we're sitting here tonight. That is why our citizens are so concerned, and we are in a recovery period. And so I challenge the rest of the council to acknowledge that. I challenge the city staff. I challenge GUC. I challenge ENC Alliance. I challenge all of the above to acknowledge that we are in a recovery period. We have to work together to recover the trust of our citizens. That is one of the reasons we're sitting here tonight with this level of intensity on this topic. I do agree with the citizens. I was one of the ones leading the charge to fight against it, Ms. Carla, in 2021. And yes, I would absolutely love a ban. But every one of us up here has done a significant amount of research on what the ramifications of that might be. With that being said, Albert Einstein said, you know, you can't solve your problems doing things the same way you did when you created them. So we do need to put further restrictions on this. My suggestions for further restrictions, and I'm not making a motion yet, I'm just making suggestions. We can make that motion later, is that we put a time limit on it, that it has to operate during regular business hours. You know, I suggested in our meeting last month that we not have modular units allowed. Want to reiterate that. And I, you know, suggested earlier that we decrease the amount of decibels that are allowed and not even based on our ordinance. Now, as it relates to our ordinances on sound, we need to acknowledge that our ordinances based on sound are based on human ears. So it doesn't even consider wildlife. And we haven't gone as in-depth with the discussion in the last month, or even when it came to the city in 2022, as we did in 2021 when we were arguing this with the county. So we've all, we've talked mainly about how it would affect us. We have not talked extensively about how it would affect our environment and how it might affect our wildlife. Now, I'm a country girl. I tell y'all that all the time. I ain't got my boots on tonight, but I got them on in heart. And with that being said, when you live in the country, you move out there for a certain reason. And out in the country, number one, as it relates to human ears, and I'm addressing what you just said a second ago, Liz, you know, that we have pretty good standards as it relates to sound. Well, you know, number one, that's easy for us to say when it's not near our house. Number two, that is easy to say when you're not considering that sound being consistent 24 hours a day. Number three, as a country girl, any noise is a lot of noise when you used to know noise. Just this morning, I mean, I done praised the Lord all day because I was woken up this morning by the sound of the best choir in the land, the birds singing outside my window. And anything that interrupted, that would have pissed me off. All right? Anything that interrupted, that would have pissed me slam off. So that would have been unacceptable for me. The other piece, as it relates to the noise and the sound, again, that is reflective of human ears. But we know that most animals, all of their, all of their senses are much keener than ours. Going back to being a country girl, my great-granddaddy was a hunter. So anything that would push wildlife out or away, number one, could affect potential endangered species that might be in that area, but also could affect the quality of life of the citizens living in that area as it relates to what wildlife might be available to hunt and do other things. Okay? So that is why I propose that the sound decibels be reduced. That needs to be taken into consideration in addition to the fact that even if y'all had to listen to me talking at the rate that I'm talking right now, and it was 24 hours a day, I would get on your last nerve. Okay? So having said that, to reiterate, I think we need to reduce the decibels as it relates to sound. I think that we need to increase the distance in footage from the facility. I would love to see, and I don't even know if that would be legal, but I would love to see it be a mile or two away from a school minimum. But I don't know if we can do that. But could accept the 3,400 feet that was suggested. But I do want to open up that conversation as to the possibility of it being more. So and then also increase and add some time restraints to make it that they could only operate during business hours. And so those were, you know, those were my comments.
I'm sorry.
You mentioned the modulars, right?
I'm sorry.
The modulars.
Oh, yes, I did mention the modulars.
Okay.
Uh huh.
Should I go ahead and make that an emotion, as a form of emotion, and I can add the things that you just discussed?
Okay. Did anyone else, out of respect, have anything else to say, add, comments?
I would just like to say that each month I'm reminded of the importance of the decisions that we make here on council. And so here we find ourselves dealing with an issue that was, was decided on by a previous council. And like I said, it impresses upon me even more how the decisions we make are so. so important. And it's been extremely frustrating to have to then grapple with how you try to fix something that you weren't a part of creating, and then be told that, you know, well, these are your options, but then, you know, wouldn't advise this, and we wouldn't advise that, and don't do that either. So it's been extremely frustrating. And so I think that having the options of the most restrictive, legally defendable, I believe, was the words that were used.
Very good.
Restrictions would be where I would lend my support, given this seemingly no-win situation.
And I would like to add, if doable, because this has to go to PNC, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That be expedited?
So Mayor Protem, if council adopts some recommendations tonight, then we would plan on taking that to PNC this month and bring it back to council at the May meeting in a public hearing for adoption.
Okay. So today, that meeting's the sixth, our next May meeting is on the sixth of May?
It would be that Thursday meeting.
So the eighth, and today's the eighth, so approximately a month that we can get that done. So.
Councilwoman Blackburn.
If I may make that, y'all know I want to get a motion on the floor. I'm going to try to incorporate what I've heard from everybody, and I know we still have one question about increasing the mileage, but I think that that, when we looked at that, that may be the equivalent of a ban, but I leave that to stay.
Yeah, that's constructive.
Is that what it was?
I just wanted to reiterate.
Okay.
Pushed it as far as it can.
Okay. So in keeping, I'd like to make a motion, in two parts, if that is acceptable. In keeping with staff's recommendation, would like to drop modular data processing facility from our city ordinance number 22-014. Second part, in keeping with our staff's recommendation and the comments of my peers on council, that we increase the distance from 2,500 feet to 3,400 feet between these uses, that is a single-family dwelling and a school, and conforming single-family dwellings, that we have a operating time of regular business hours, nine to five, and that, to the extent the law allows us, to reduce the decibels allowed to be emitted from these centers.
Okay, we got no modular, 3,400 feet, time restrictions to normal business hours, and we will take a look at the decibels. I mean, if that's a motion.
That was my motion.
My question is, if it's suspected that, if this were to come to fruition, and a business were to be here and operating in this space, in this industry, and they're operating outside of the nine to five business hours, then how would we be able to hold them accountable? Or?
Councilmember Willis, we're going to have to take a look at that. We're going to have to, staffs is going to have to put their heads together to talk about how we enforce that. I do not have a direct answer for you right now, but ultimately, we will come up with something. We will have to, we'll have to address that.
I'd like to second the motion.
Motion made by Councilwoman Blackburn, second.
I think.
Second by Councilwoman Foreman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against?
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you all so much for coming.
Mr. Manager, I'm tired. Mr. Manager, our next.
Next item, item number eight, Budget Ordinance Amendment number nine to the 2023-2024 City of Greenville budget, ordinance number 23-046, the Capital Projects Fund, ordinance number 17-024, Special Revenue Grant Fund, ordinance number 11-003, occupancy tax fund, ordinance number 11-003, and the Engineering Capital Project Fund, ordinance number 20-019. I'll call Chief Financial Officer Jacob Joyner.
You guys, can y'all excuse me one second? I'm so sorry. Jalen, do you mind for me helping Ms. Carla?
Oh, no, I'm good.
You sure?
I can get my balance. I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Jacob Joyner to give presentation, but wait for a second for everybody to clear
Good evening, councilmembers. We have Budget Ordinance Amendment number nine to the fiscal year 24 City of Greenville This will be impacting the general fund, occupancy tax fund, capital project funds, and special revenue grant fund. Item A will be to recognize funds received for Guy Smith Stadium improvements. That will increase our Recreation Parks Capital Project Fund by $17,000. We're going to recognize a transfer from reserve occupancy taxes to the Recreation and Parks Capital Project Fund for the sports complex study. That will increase the Recreation and Parks Capital Project Fund $3,600. Item C will be recognizing funds received from the North Carolina Museum Grant, and that will increase our Special Revenue Grant Fund by $30,000. Item D will record transfers for traffic safety improvements from the general fund appropriated fund balance. That's going to increase our Engineering Capital Project Fund by $56,000 and the general fund by $56,000. Item E will be transferring remaining project funds to the general fund for interdant utility services. That will lead to no change in the Engineering Capital Project Fund and will increase the general fund $179,000. Then we have item F, which will recognize additional revenue received and increase appropriations for fire rescue, public works, and planning and development departments, and that will increase our general fund $150,000. That brings our total operating fund budget to $176 million, and the general fund makes up $109.7 million of that. And we ask that council approves Budget Ordinance Amendment number nine.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Blackburn, second by, which one? Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay. It is time for our city managers' report.
All right, so first, before we jump into the report, I'll ask for the council agenda for the April 11th, 2024 meeting to be displayed on the screen, so we can show the public the items that will be considered on Thursday night.
Can I ask a question?
Nope. Yes.
So maybe I was asleep when I read it the first time, but I thought the accessible parks grant application was for Woodlawn.
It is. What does it say here?
Wow.
That's.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good catch.
Very good.
Because I was like, that's it, wait a minute, that was in my district, now it's not.
Went to my district, right?
I mean, I'd love for you to have it, but.
You're correct.
It's like, wait a minute.
Okay, city manager's report. Actually, I must say, I'm kind of disappointed that item number two was not pulled off the consent agenda, and it's two electric buses. How'd you get that one? Come on, now.
I know, I saw that. I was like, ah, I'm just going to let that go.
All right, now.
I threatened to pinch her. That's what.
You can say I don't have any more water.
Everybody's been running interference for me pulling items off the consent agenda.
In all seriousness, what a great application that is for the city to pursue. Two electric buses, $2 million investment by the federal government, and another $340,000, $300,000 investment by the City of Greenville. Hopefully, this will be a start of a process that we can move forward with concerns to our clean technology. And then, not to be disappointed, we will have a this week, this month spotlight on the 250th anniversary of the City of Greenville. Some of you, for the night's video, some of you might remember the attic, which was located in.
Yes.
The attic opened in 1971 and was the most popular live music and entertainment venue in the eastern North Carolina and the entire state. I will say it has a very special place in my heart because 34 years ago, that's where I met my wife.
Oh.
It was a night in July, teen night at the attic when we were in high school.
It's so wholesome. It was teen night.
Teen night in the attic, so it's got a very special place in my heart. In this video, maybe not my wife, but at least mine. In this video, former owner Joe Tronto tells the story of the time Hootie and the Blowfish, which was a regular bar band at the attic for many years, returned for a surprise appearance in 1996 after selling more than 13 million albums. Let's roll this.
Well, the big show was Hootie and the Blowfish. They had already sold 13 million copies after being a bar band for me for years. They hit it big, sold 13 million copies, and said, we want to come back and do a surprise show. Don't tell anybody, but we'll be here. And we held the surprise all the way up to loading, didn't tell, so I didn't even tell the stagehands what was going on. We just told them there was the opening acts gear that was coming, and that's it. So we turned away, I don't know, 1,000 people that night, because once the word got out, the bus pulled up, it was all over town. Yeah, it was all word of mouth. 96 cell phones just started getting around. That night, I had a radio station walk up to me, I don't even know how they got in the door with an old-fashioned cellphone and stuck it in my face, you live on the air? And I'm like, that's a good idea. There was a network of people just calling everybody, and, you know, a bus pulls up, and God bless those guys, they said, can we go eat at Bowley's? Because I used to send them over there for dinner when they were playing as a bar band. And they said, we want to go there again. All they wanted was to relive their bar life.
I tell you what, I don't know which was better, the attic or Bowley's Pizza. Bowley's Pizza was the most pizza. I miss it to this day, but great memories for the city. And there were a lot of bands that played at that attic, not just Hootie and the Blowfish. That's all I have.
And now we have our comments from city council, and we will start with Councilwoman Foreman.
You know, just to reiterate what I said a few moments ago, I think that we are in a period that we need to make sure that it's at the most forefront of our hearts to maintain and, in some ways, at some levels, recover what is the most important of our resources in our community, and that's our people. We need to maintain that trust, and in some areas, in some cases, rebuild that trust. We talk a lot about capital. We talk about financial capital. We talk about political capital in some other arenas, but what is always most important to me is social capital. And again, I just want to challenge all of us to continue to work together to make sure that we build, maintain, and sustain that social capital. So that's all I have for tonight.
Councilwoman Blackburn?
Thank you. And I just would like to give it up for our Mayor Protem, who has done a tremendous job this evening. One of our most intense, engaged council meetings that I have, you know, been part of, and I just want to say that our Mayor Protem has done a fantastic job, and I thank you for leading us with such grace and dignity and respect. Also, got to thank the staff.
Yes.
Got to thank, Shante's not here, got to thank planning staff. Got to thank these two right here.
Yes.
Because they have heard from me just a little bit. Just saying, just saying.
Walkin' buddy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've been hiking, and Emmanuel has had to try to pull out his bar license and prove to me that in fact he has more credentials to discuss the law than me, but I really appreciate it. I appreciate my peers on council, and I appreciate the conversation that took place tonight that was respectful, that was thorough, and that also acknowledged our limitations. And so I just, I really appreciate my peers and our staff, and of course, the public, their tremendous showing tonight and their tremendous comments, so well-versed and prepared. I would like to next commend our police officers under the leadership of Chief Ted Salz. We again had an incredibly tense situation, a five-and-a-half-hour standoff, a domestic violence situation, and officers. My understanding from social workers and police officers is that domestic violence is probably the most dangerous situation that our officers encounter. There was an infant involved, and not only was the situation diffused, but again, the suspect was arrested and taken into custody without harm. An officer was shot, and Officer Lovelace, understand, he is going to recover, and I just want to commend his bravery and his courage for being in the middle of this situation, and to commend our officers, and again, the leadership of Chief Salz, because when we take, again, I said this last time, but when you take a suspect into custody, it immediately diffuses the net violence of that situation, and it says to us, says to the community, we are trained, and we know how to use restraint, and we respect human life of all kinds, even when there is, even when there may be someone who may be suspected of committing violence. And that, to me, just is a hallmark of our police department, and I can't say enough good things about the way this situation was handled and diffused. My last comment is to our city manager. Got one more to do. When we're looking at our unified ordinance, what's it called, Unified Development Ordinance? Yes. Could we possibly look at, when we were looking at commercial zoning on the Town Common, all we had to choose from was neighborhood commercial, heavy commercial. So the zoning we have on our Town Common right now can have an auto supply parts store, funeral parlor, all kinds of things, because it's just a plain old run-of-the-mill commercial zoning. Could we have, as part of that Unified Development Ordinance, some kind of parks mercantile zoning developed? So if we want to sell souvenirs, or skates, or whatever, we can do that.
We can take a look at the zoning, but just note that, except for that 1.4 acres that's down there on the east end, you can't do anything other than have a park.
Yes.
It's restricted.
Yes.
No matter what the zoning is, there are restrictions on it, Land and Water Conservation Fund restrictions on it, federal restrictions that not allow us to do anything. The only area to look at would be that 1.4 acres down at the east end, and even then, within the confines of the Town Common Master Plan, it does call for like, something like that, like a, you know, small restaurant, event space, souvenir center. So yes, we can take a look at it, but just note that it is protected.
Yes, and I appreciate your reaffirming that. I just would really like for us in the future, if we wanted to have a cafe at J.C. Park, or if we wanted to sell roller skates, or inline, you know, whatever you do, whatever you might want to do, that we'd have a zoning for it, for us to do that in a park without having to have these by right commercial zoning uses. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Willis?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Daniels. I just wanted to thank our city manager and our staff for the preparation for tonight's meeting, as well as the work that they do day in and day out, our city staff, to serve our city. And again, wonderful job this evening, Mayor Protem Daniels. That's all the comments I've got.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
No, it was you, Councilwoman Robinson. I was looking at you.
She's going to show up in a dress next Thursday. She's going to show up in a dress on Thursday.
No, he already did the shorts.
I still forgive you. I think you've got an excellent job, I can only echo. Last Tuesday night, as you and I know, Mayor Protem, these domestic calls typically are murder-suicides. And that's tragic, because tragic for all kinds of different reasons, but on this occasion, under the leadership of Ted Salz, my buddy, and his officers under. and his officers, under his leadership, and I will call it the Special Response Team, like, is that what y'all still call them, emergency response? Emergency Response Team, those guys who put themselves in harm's way to protect people, and they did an excellent, excellent job to not only get the infant out, but also hopefully the young lady was not very injured. And even though he's not sometimes likable, the guy came out alive. And because it's all too easy just to break down the doors and start shooting and blades away like a western. But what I really say, that that's the second event we've had in a very short period of time. And I want to say to Ted, my buddy, I think it underscores the wisdom of the choice of him as our chief in ways we can't even imagine on a daily, I'm pumping his head up now.
I was about to say.
But day in and day out, you know, the people who get the complaints about the neighbors and the speeding tickets and other stuff, but this really is an illustration of the wisdom of choosing him as our chief to run our local department, and how the men and women operate under his leadership has been excellent. So kudos to him, to Officer Lovelace, you know, thank goodness it wasn't any worse, and he was following the protocols and got some what I would call birdshot. If you're seeing this at home, our prayers with you and blessings with you, and thank you for putting yourself in harm's way to protect other people, because our police officers every day, sometimes are criticized, but every day they go to work, the men and women of this city, put themselves in potential harm to get shot or injured to protect us, and that's admirable thing. So again, Chief, thank you. Number two, I want to say congratulations again to Don Optigan and the university, and everybody that put on the Little League World Softball Series, and congratulations to the city for passing it for another two years. That's putting us on the world stage. It's also an example of what traveling sports industry can do for our city, but also shows what we can do when the spotlight's on us to put on it, because I hear nothing but accolades. I think I've shared them with the council about going and talking to people who come to our city and town who are not even playing a sport, just want to watch the event, and just kudos. Look forward to doing that even more. And finally, thank you to all of our staff tonight for being with us, and E and C, thank you for coming down, and I wish Mr. Patterson here too, and standing this late with us. And hey, to our fellow member out in the audience that's left with us, sir.
Mr. Parker.
It's very important that we hear voices in this city council chambers. I heard them when I was on planning a zoning, and I think it's an important part of what we do. Thank you for coming down tonight. I wish the rest were here, because I say the same thing to them, because we represent everybody. I don't represent District Five, yes, I do, but I represent the city. So thank you, sir, for coming down and voicing your opinions about the topic which we spoke about. Appreciate you being here, appreciate you staying. And I will not be here to everybody's dismay Thursday night.
What?
I'm taking my wife, well, I should say, I shoot sporting clays. I'm going down to Savannah to shoot a competition where you kill these biodegradable clays.
I was gonna say, kill them. Surely, he's not gonna say it right out like that.
I bust them up, they're dirty, they fall back into the dirt, ashes and ashes. And so I'm going down there with my wife to enjoy Savannah, what they have to offer. I'm sure when I go down there, by the time I leave Savannah, everybody's gonna hear about Greenville.
Right.
Because I'm gonna talk about how Greenville's a great place to be, and y'all need to come to Savannah, come to Greenville.
That's exactly right.
Thank you very much, I'm Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Councilman Scully.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'd like to add my thanks to Officer Lovelace, and Chief Salz, and the Greenville Police Department, the Emergency Response Unit, for the incredible work that they do every day. And the two incidents that have happened recently are terrifying, and it's so heartening and wonderful that we have the people that we do to defend us and to do it in the right way. So thank you so much, Chief Salz. Please share our thanks with Officer Lovelace especially. And I'd like to add my thanks to city staff and the community that came out tonight. It was a really great conversation, and I feel really good about the changes that we made to the ordinance. I feel like we've done our best to protect our citizens, and that's our job. And so I congratulate my colleagues and thank city staff for all the work that you've done, again and again, to make sure that we have the information that we need to make the right decision. Really appreciate you all. My daughter and wife performed in Beauty and the Beast this past weekend, and I'm so proud of them, and wanted to congratulate them in this as public a setting as I can get. So congratulations, Erin and Ireland, on your incredible performance, and everybody that was with them at the Oakwood School in their performance of Beauty and the Beast. Theater is so important for so many reasons, but to see those kids up there, the experience that they're having, the memories that they're making, and what that's doing for their lives and their character moving forward, it's just incredible, and I'm so thankful for my wife and all the staff for taking care of my daughter and giving her that that experience opportunity. Also want to remind everybody about our businesses on Dickinson Avenue. There's a huge construction project happening down there, the street's closed, it looks terrible. But there are still really wonderful businesses operating there, open, and we really need to continue to support them, make sure that you go down there, show the love. Sidewalks are still open, the parking lots are open and free at this moment on Dickinson Avenue, so please go down and support those businesses on Dickinson. But also on West Fifth Street, there's, we continue to have some construction down there as well. I know Coffee and Spice has been dealing with it for months at the new turnabout over there. So wherever there's construction, especially in our downtown, it's so important for us to have a successful downtown. It's the heart of our city, it's the engine of our culture, our economy, and it's so important for us to have a successful and vibrant downtown. And so we're counting on you to pull those businesses through through this tough period of street construction. It's gonna be beautiful when it's done, but it ain't easy getting through the bumps in the road, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
My turn. I'd like to also thank the staff. It's been a long, seems like year, but I guess a couple of months, as we went through all the crypto, and the questions, and the meetings, and everything, and for all your research, all your due diligence, thank you all very much. I'm an after-hours caller, so thank you for picking up the phone when I just have these spur-of-the-moment questions, it is greatly appreciated. I also would like to send my thoughts and prayers to Officer Lovelace. I know that he is healing physically and mentally, and my thoughts and prayers are with him. And, you know, it really touched my heart when I saw Chief Salz on the television, and one thing he said that stood out to me is that he was dealing with the officers, and Deputy Chief Ivy was dealing with the families. So you took the time to make sure everyone was covered. You know, I was having, I guess, a PTSD moment. That's when I was working in Greene County, the outcome wasn't as good, and we lost an officer with that. So I definitely prayed a little harder that night for everybody, and I'm glad it ended the way that it should have, that the gentleman, you know, we didn't injure anyone. And, you know, sometimes your feelings can get into it, kinda, you know? But you guys were professional, you did what you were supposed to do, how you were supposed to do it, and everyone was watching, and they saw that, and so that is appreciated. To my colleagues on the council, thank y'all for putting up with me tonight. Thank you for your help in this process, and thank you for the conversations that we've had. Whether we agreed or not, it's so nice and refreshing to speak with people that you can agree to disagree with and still walk, move forward, because we know that the work that we do is for the people, so that is greatly appreciated. And last but not least, it is Child Abuse Awareness Month. I went around and I put some extra pinwheels out around Greenville, because that's what I do. You know, child abuse awareness is very, very near and dear to my heart. If you see something, say something. It is all of our responsibility to keep children safe. We should not be raising children that have to recover from their childhoods. They should have beautiful childhoods. And so the month of April, there will be walks with Pitt County DSS. We've already had our Wear Blue Day. Do what you can to help the children that you see. It's, again, all of our responsibilities, and thank you all. And with that, Attorney McGurk.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mayor Protem and councilmembers, I recommend that council adopt a motion holding a closed session for the following reasons pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, section one forty-three dash three-eighteen, point eleven, A four, to discuss two separate matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations.
First, we're going to close session.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Robinson, and second by Councilwoman Blackburn. We are in a closed session, wait.